The Stark County Commission meeting at nine twenty. We will start with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll go into the ratification of the agenda. Are there any ratifications?
Yeah, the bid opening is at ten o'clock.
Okay.
Oh, I didn't see that. Oh.
We will do it. The bid opening for the CP dash forty-five twenty-two oh one road project will be after the break. And then also, we will also put on the motion for the park board. Are there any more ratifications to the agenda? If not, I'd need a motion. Motion by Commissioner Marsh.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Franchak. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We'll go into the minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Which minutes are you referring to?
The minutes from the May fifth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
I move to approve the May fifth twenty-two, twenty-oh, twenty-two minutes as presented.
Commissioner Messer moves to approve. Do I need a second? Need a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You also need the approval of the longest meeting in history from on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
I make a motion that we approve those minutes of that meeting. May second.
They're here sec- May eleventh, I'm sorry.
Eleventh. We have two special meetings in there, right? We'll do that one first since that's the one you brought up.
Okay, yeah, May eleventh, sorry.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then now this is May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two, there's a special meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the May nineteenth, two thousand twenty special meeting.
Second.
Moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll go on, move on to accounts payable. Are there any questions on accounts payable? With the supplement.
Got a question of the, the billing, it's actually, uh, under, under, right under county, uh, county recorder, it said eight thousand two hundred twenty-seven seventy-sixty-three, is that actually under the sheriff's budget or is that supposed to be somewhere else? Right here, on the first page of the resolution, correct, the bottom, second to the bottom of the page. Cause the next page shows part of the sheriff's budget, that should be part of the county road, isn't it?
Black Hills Trucking.
Right. Eight thousand two hundred and twenty-seven sixty-three.
Mr. Heiser, that would be under Black Hills Trucking. Would that be under roads?
Yeah, that was to move that portable bridge over to south or we had the bridge closed.
Okay.
That was to pick it up, transport it, and reset it over the existing bridge.
It was the first one. There's two of them. I was on the first page. Yes, it'll have to be, it's right there. So we moved to road.
Yeah, it's not, it's not under here.
Okay.
Also on the last page, under Stark Office Building thirty-nine ninety-eight for supplies and newbies, is that for the, or? Any idea what that's for, Mike, or?
Where is it at? Under the last page?
Yeah, on the last page, under Stark Office Building thirty-nine ninety-eight for supplies from Newbies Ace Hardware. Right. For a mower. Okay, thanks.
I also see on the, for the LEC in this, for the LEC building and the jail. We do give a monthly capital improvement money to them every month, so then why are we still getting charged for building repair also? We're, how come we're not just using it out of the money we give them monthly? Right here.
Third page.
Third page.
Isn't that something that we? Gave them a grant and then paying the grant, we gotta pay that? Is that what it's all about?
No, we give them so much money monthly for the whole building.
Right.
And you're talking about?
The, of the six thousand dollars, and then I just saw in the top, one above it, that we also paid four hundred and fifteen dollars and eight cents for a building repair. Does not that, doesn't that just come out of that money that we give them monthly?
So, my understanding is, is that we have an agreement that with the LEC for that capital improvement amount, and until we decide that we're not approving that budget. They get a set amount for capital improvement. Now, as far as building repair, that's probably specifically has to do with something that we're responsible for. I would say probably in the sheriff's department or. And I can check on that to see what it was for.
Ms. Ingleston, on that JPA, doesn't that cover the whole building when it's LEC, when we give them that monthly money?
I'd have to look at it. It's not in my office, but off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you for sure.
Okay.
I, I do think they have the ability to go through that proration, and there are certain things that are included and not included, so maybe that's.
Okay.
Where that's coming from.
That's what I'm thinking also.
Any other questions on accounts payable? If not, I need a motion.
I'll move to approve the payment of the bills with the supplement.
I'll second.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchak.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Aye.
Comis- aye, or Chair votes aye, motion carried. County agent, introduction of interim, Mr. Freilich.
Good morning, Commissioners. With me is Holly, Holly Tuie, our FCW agent, along with Taylor Downing. Taylor is doing a twelve-week NDSU Extension Summer Internship, so she's on her third week?
Yep.
Third week, so she can introduce herself, where she's at in, in school, and what her future goals are, and that's all we have for you.
Hello, everyone. I am Taylor Downing, originally a native out of Billings County. I'm going to Dickinson State University, majoring in education, and my future plans are to end up as an extension agent, hopefully somewhere out in southwest North Dakota, so. If you guys have any further questions, that's all I have, so.
Short and sweet.
We like you.
Yeah, welcome. Sheriff report.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning. I'll try to go equally fast. All right, highlights for the Stark County Sheriff's Department for the month of May two thousand twenty-two. Total calls for service were fourteen hundred and thirty-one, this is down from fourteen seventy-four last year. Two hundred and sixty-four traffic stops, this is down from three hundred and sixty last year. May is our grant time, so we didn't participate quite as much, in quite as much grant this year, that's why those numbers are down. Seventy-five stops of those were in the city of Dickinson, one hundred and eighty-nine stops from the county and neighboring small towns. One hundred and sixty-eight public relations stops, this is down from two hundred and fifteen last year. Fourteen bar checks, this is up from eight last year. Ten theft-related calls, this is down from twelve last year. Fifty-three transports, which is a very high number. Seventeen prisoner, two assists, twenty-two court, one juvenile, four medical, and seven mental health. Twenty-seven canine usages, three truck rig stops, she, she participated in twenty-three other, twenty, excuse me, twenty-two other calls for service that month. There's forty-one agency assists, this is up from thirty-seven last month. Responded to ten accidents, which is a very reasonable number. Zero pedestrians, zero fatalities, zero hit-and-run, two injury, and eight property. There was eighty-six total arrests for the month. Today and tomorrow, we are participating in a combined training event with Dunn County and the Correctional Center. I don't know if a couple of guys from PD are coming or not. We did this about ten years ago with the same, it's a ground fighting training. That's the last time I remember us actually training with the Correctional Center staff, so that's something that we want to implement and do more of now. For a multitude of reasons, we should be training with those people because we get in a lot of scuffles with them, so we kind of want to be on the same page. And like I said, it's been about ten years, so there's kind of a changing of the guard up there, so I think we're gonna hopefully implement some new things and work together a little bit more so we get to know each other better. A lot of graduations, obviously, in the month of May, there was, it seemed like there was more large graduation parties this year, but we didn't have any incidents, so that was nice. Our hairiest moment was probably a, a truck, a trailer, truck trailer that was full of tannery that started on fire on the interstate just east of Dickinson. Luckily, that did not explode, so that took quite some doing, and we had to shut the interstate down for a little bit. And our vehicle expense budget, as you can imagine, is about ten percent over at this point, so. Our budget, our existing total budget is probably about one percent over, give or take, so we got some flexibility there, but I think that's gonna probably hurt us in the end, so. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. County Road, Mr. Heiser.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Little update what the road department is up to. Last week, we started hauling scoria. This week, we're kind of at a standstill doing much of anything. We tried to write a few roads that are hard, but I'm not gonna give the weather too much heck because we've been long waiting for that. We got, and then we're gonna start replacing a few culverts. We got some culverts out that we're gonna replace this summer. And then I guess only, only other thing I have is we got the bid opening after the Board of Equalization for Hundred and Seventh and Thirty-second Street. I'm just hoping with the high fuel prices, this project isn't kind of through the roof, but every day it seemed like the fuel prices keep creeping, and like Corey says, you know, I think budgets for fuel and stuff's gonna be a little bit whack by this fall, so, but. I guess very much we can do about it. We can't, can't stop, we gotta keep making progress and moving ahead, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else unless you got something for me. And our, I'll let our engineers give their reports on the projects they're updated, and it's me talking about them when they'll take them, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Interstate Engineering, James Katermas. Good morning.
Just the one design project for us, Thirty-eighth Street Bridge Replacement. Plans and specs are at eighty percent. We are waiting for the department to return the Cultural Resources Report submitted to them in March. We must have that document returned soon to keep on schedule for the November bid opening. Our environmental engineer is following up to keep pressure on the DOT. County has put a temporary bridge in that spot, and it's installed, it's, it's down to one lane though, so it's still a dangerous condition. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Highland Engineering, Mr. Nice.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple of design projects we're working on. The first one, B R P zero-zero-four-five-oh-seven-four, fifteen miles south and eight miles east of Richardson. We have the bid letting, DOT bid letting come this Friday. Cross our fingers and see how that goes. I think most of you may be aware that the pre-cast concrete box culverts now are real long lead item. In fact, I think any box culvert projects that are coming out now aren't getting produced till two thousand twenty-three, so on this job, we put in October first, twenty-three completion date. Our other project we're in design and the documented CAD-X work we're working on is the eight miles north of Richardson, four miles east. We do not have any funding on this job yet. Both the federal highway bill coming out, we got more and more pockets of money coming out, and we're hoping to get some funding for this job. The DOT is requesting applications for all the county bridge projects by the end of June, so I'll be working with Al and Todd and identifying some other projects and, and getting them on the list. Getting applications in for, for some more projects, so. This project, once we receive funding, we hopefully will get it on the November twenty-second, twenty-two bid letting here this fall, so. I think that's all I have right now. Anybody have any questions?
No. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Northern Plains, Mr. Wood.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just a few brief updates, starting with our construction projects. Carryover project last year over by Bellfield, the only thing that they really have left to seeding, which they should wrap that up pretty soon here. We had a pretty job for Thirty-eighth Street Bridge, southwest of Richardson. Yesterday, the contract is looking at starting the week of June twentieth, so that's about a three-week duration project, so that should wrap up in, in early July. Another project, Eighty-third and Eighty-sixth Avenue, further south, Richardson. That construction is expected to begin sometime in October, possibly September, but it looks like it's most likely October for that project. The paving project that was bid last meeting, that is expected to begin in middle of July. So we got a few projects out the door and bid, but nothing started as far as construction. Design projects, we have a bid opening like Al mentioned for Thirty-second and One-O-seventh. That'll be shortly after ten, I would imagine, for that bid opening. And then last couple of projects we have is some federally projects, both by Bellfield. Working with the DOT, getting everything sent in for a November bid opening for both those projects. Construction hopefully will be in two thousand twenty-three. Like everybody else, the supply chain issues or whatever with the box culverts, they're about a year out from being made, so. Hoping to get it bid in November with construction next year, but I think that's certainly doable, but there's no guarantee of that, so. Any questions on that or any other projects we've been working on?
Jeremy, just one question, I don't know if Al could answer to you. The fifteen oh five funding, is there a time restraint on, on those funds, you know?
No.
And how, there is none?
There is, but it's like twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six or something.
So my concern was if you have.
Between the paving project and this project we can bid today, I'm sure that two and a half million will be gone.
Yeah, I was just more concerned about the supply chain timing, if you can't get a project done beyond their deadline, so if it's twenty twenty-five, I think you're fine.
Yeah, we'll, we'll exhaust all those funds, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. City of Taylor Water Infrastructure.
Morning.
Good morning.
Emory Vogan, Mayor, Taylor, and just wanted to let you guys know, I don't know if you guys have traveled east on Old Ten, but we got a new water tower that was put up with Southwest Water and the city of Taylor. We bought an additional fifty thousand gallons on that water tower with the hopes of eventually getting the infrastructure to run that right into the city and to the homes there, which is something that we've been needing for probably thirty years, and it seems like with the expansion, the continual homes being built in Taylor, that it's something we want to do rather quickly if we can. All I wanted to do was basically come and let you know this is what we're planning, and as the numbers start coming in. Any, any help you guys can give us, we would appreciate it.
Do you have some grants and grant money and stuff filled out for that money coming in?
We put out some grant applications to start the pre-planning.
Okay.
With it, and so we haven't gotten any of that yet, but I think that's through North Dakota Rural Water. So, we'll see, but it's pretty exciting. I've had a lot of calls, mostly.
So, for Taylor?
Yeah, absolutely. Everybody's wondering what color we're gonna paint it, like whatever Southwest Water tells us. So that, that's it, you know, it's, it's pretty exciting seeing that go up, it's a driving on Old Ten, you can see that from the Green River Hill, so it's a pretty tall tower.
With all the little squares welded in, you can do a patchwork quilt type thing in different colors up there, and everybody would be happy.
Yeah, absolutely. There's a lot of people saying, can you put the Taylor Redbird up, and I'm like, I don't know if we even have a copy of that anymore. So yeah, that, that's, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Hopefully we can work together in the future.
Okay. Thanks, Emory.
How much do you think, I mean, do you have a estimate or what do you think? Or where, where are you in the process?
Well, right now, we, with that, with that fifty thousand gallons, that was for fire flow for the city of Taylor, that cost us a hundred and seventy-one thousand, which we paid for through our surge fund money that we'd been saving for, since that kind of came out during the boom. And at this point, I really don't even know what it's gonna cost. All of our water lines, we've got a couple of three-inch, we've got some two-inch, and then we've got some that are even smaller than that. I don't know if we know if it's an inch and an eighth or inch and a half, which doesn't really suit the city. We can't hook onto the water tower with that just because of the pressure that'll come out, it'll cause us all kinds of water, water main issues. So, at this point, working with our engineer, I'm thinking we should just go with an eight-inch loop throughout the city and, and have plenty of capacity for the future. And it, and it brings two, kind of two issues. One of the things that we have for our water right now is we've got a twenty-two thousand gallon cistern with two electric pumps. And when the, if, if we do lose power, it's, it kind of works pretty nice because we don't have water, which means we don't have sewer. Once we hook onto the water tower, then all of a sudden, we gotta figure out how we're gonna handle the sewer sit- situation, because we'll need power pushing that stuff out too. Kind of goes hand in hand, so a lot of little issues we'll just have to deal with, but. But as far as a total number, it's just a guess.
Okay. Okay.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you. Building permit appeal, Faren and Autumn Richard.
Morning.
Morning.
So we're here contesting a building permit, and just starting off, we had a contractor come in and do an addition on our home. And when he started doing all the preliminary, he asked if we were farmers, if we farmed, and we said, yes, we farm, we're farmers, so we just moved on and never gave it a second thought. Why would we? We farm over a thousand acres, and we own all of it privately except for a hundred and fifty acres that we rent. So, we got the paperwork from the county, and it says according to the Century Code, you know, it says to be an active farmer with a farm residence exemption form. It says the individual normally devotes the majority portion of his or her time to the activities producing, you know, in their unmanufactured state, products of the soil, I won't read the whole thing. And then it says, and the individual and spouse, if married, receive an annual gross income from farming activities, which is sixty-six percent or more of their annual gross income during either the two preceding calendar years. According to Stark County, in order to be considered a farmer, for the purpose of the code, the owner or tenant of the farm shall earn fifty-one percent or more of his or her annual income from the operation of the farm. You also have a definition for a farm, and it's a zoned area of Stark County containing at least forty acres, which is used for the reduction of agricultural crops or livestock, so forth and so on. It's pretty self-explanatory. So when I read off your codes and your definitions, we qualify as farmers some years. Some years we don't. It can depend on the market, it can depend on natural disasters. I mean, Faren has a good example of us selling durum one year.
Mr. Messer, for example, you're the only farmer I think is on the commission. Did you sell, do you grow durum? Do you grow durum?
Not, no, not.
If you did grow durum, would you have sold in twenty twenty?
No.
You went to sell, you, you know you went to sell any grain in twenty twenty.
You went to sell, you know you went to sell any grain in twenty twenty.
At least not hindsight, looking back.
Right? Is that correct?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's.
Chances are you would have sold.
Based on market conditions, yeah, absolutely.
Six months later, I'd see, I'd bought some farmland.
Down in Bentley.
Down in Bentley, and in December, I sold my durum for six bucks. That was a mistake, wasn't it?
In hindsight.
Yeah, that was hindsight. If you'd have known durum was gonna be sixteen dollars and six months later, you'd. Six months later, you'd have deemed me a farmer.
Because our gross annual income would have been solely from the farm, but because of selling earlier, we had other.
We missed it.
We missed it, and so we had other avenues that showed more income than the farm.
And another thing, according to your definitions here. My daughter, I rented sixty acres to my daughter last year. She is deemed a farmer because she had a job with Sharp Knolls for eighteen dollars an hour, that's thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Forty-two cent canola with what she made off her cropped. She was deemed a farmer.
She qualifies.
She don't own a lawn tractor.
Okay, so, but my point is, in your own definition, so no matter what, whether you consider us a farmer one year or a farmer the next year, every year, three hundred and sixty-five days of every year, according to your own definition, we are a farm, and our house is on a farm, therefore it is a farmhouse. It's not rocket science. So, but yeah, like Faren pointed out here, if a farmer's been in operation for generations, according to your definitions, if they do not produce an income in that farm year and show a loss, and if they have a spouse that did show any income at that point for that calendar year, they don't qualify as a farmer. To us, that just doesn't make any sense here, you know? I think there's other things that need to come into play besides income.
The other thing, too, is the only source, the only work I do is farming.
Yeah, I was.
Today. I take in no other income. I do nothing other than farm. But due to my retirement, my house needs a permit. My neighbor's house a mile down the road don't. His is livable, mine isn't, because it doesn't have the government involved to dictate how I'm gonna build my house. And I didn't pay for it. I didn't pay the government. My neighbor don't have to pay, but I do. I do the same thing he does.
So once we realized that we were obviously out of compliance according to the current, you know, criteria, we did contact Leonard Schwint, and we spoke to him. And it was an interesting conversation, because he's sitting there telling us, we have to get this building permit. But at the same time, he stated to us that he knew our home was up to code because he knew who built it. So that happened there, and then we were also told by Ms. Natalie Wannler that we, because we do not have a building permit, that we had to stop construction. Not that we needed to, not that we should, or that we had to. And finally.
So we did.
Finally, the most alarming part of this was that Leonard Schwint said if we chose to not comply, that the structure that could be torn down, which is our home, is possible. It could be torn down. I mean, that's what he said to us, which is.
That's what you said.
It's crazy. Who says that?
Um, that's just short of organized crime.
Well, I just.
You pay your protection money, or we're gonna come out and break your kneecaps.
So this is what he's threatening to tear down. I just want to show this is our home. That's our addition on our home, what you threatened to tear down because we didn't comply with the building permit, because we thought we were in compliance. We're farmers. It's not, it's not rocket science for us.
And by the way, who gave you that picture? Nobody came out. Nobody asked me to come on my property. I don't know where that picture came from. Who went on my property without making me aware of it? Anybody?
Okay, moving on.
I don't know.
No.
So if you ask us.
I'd like to know where that picture did come from.
I can tell you, we drove out and took a picture of it.
And you have a right to.
You never made me aware you were coming.
We go out and take pictures all day, every week. We're taking pictures right now.
Okay, but that's fine, but you never made me aware of it.
The only reason we went to your house was because your daughter got a nine-one-one address, and we were looking for a residence that she was gonna build. And then I said, well, Faren just lives right up here, maybe it's on his property in the same part. But we drive in yards.
Well, I don't, that's fine, and I understand, but you have to have permission from the landowner, and that's trespassing. No?
I don't know.
Do the tax directors usually go look for nine-one-one addresses?
When we get a new nine-one-one address and we don't have a building permit? Because there's a reason they can't have a nine-one-one address unless, like consolidated, they're planning on building. They need a phone number is why they call for a nine-one-one address.
And building permits get run through Steve Josephson, correct?
No.
One question I do have, who would come out to tear down my house or my structure, which is my home?
Well, I don't, I don't think we're going there.
No, 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 no. It was said by Mr., no, Mr. Leonard.
No, no, you can wait until we are done.
No, let's see what he has.
No, I would like to finish, actually. I would like to finish, and then we can touch on that. If you want to ask me, to make farm exemption more accurate, it's not necessarily about income. I think anybody that's a farmer knows that, because there's good years and bad years in farming. I think you need to look at acreage. I think you need to look at Schedule Fs and the equipment list on tax returns. And I think you need to look at people's sole form of employment. And just to clarify, because since we are not deemed farmers.
Here's our equipment list.
Here's my equipment list.
You're welcome to look through it. There's three pages. I guess we just buy it for funny business, I'm not sure.
The truth is, we are full-time farmers, no matter what you guys think. We've been, it's our sole occupation since two thousand sixteen, and the only reason that we're here today is because we're rained out. Otherwise, we'd be planting. And Faren's not gonna say it, because Faren wouldn't say it, but he's standing here in a boot because of a farming injury. Dropped a transfer auger on his foot.
And believe it or not, my blood is red, the same as my neighbor's.
So all I'm saying is, quite frankly, either get rid of the exemption completely or make it more accurate. But, and I will polish this off with, we don't take threats lightly. And threatening to tear down our structure and having the audacity to say it is just something else entirely. You have anything else you want to add to that, Faren?
No.
When this was built, was this when it was under the City of Dickinson, or was this still under Forsgren?
This is two thousand nineteen, so that'd have been, who's this, Forstrom?
Forsgren.
Who are they?
Well, they were the contracted building department at that point with Stark County.
They were the contractors, so they weren't Stark County. You were.
Well, they represented the county, yes. They were engaged by contract.
And.
But they were an out-of-state company, so that's.
For an out-of-state company.
Yes, they were an out-of-state. The money was going out of state, so that's why we worked with Dickinson.
That's irrelevant to the conversation.
It's not relevant to me.
The point you're getting at is whether or not you were required to get a building permit at the time that you started the construction, and your concern is, are the requirements that trigger the building permit reasonable by you being engaged in farming?
Our argument is that putting your definition according to income is not an accurate depiction of farming.
I think that's a worthwhile discussion, absolutely.
As well, it's government overreach.
And I will argue that.
I'm in your same shoes. I don't get an exemption. I farm. But, so my, I do have some follow-up questions, as long as you're at the podium. The Sentry Code you referenced, the sixty-six percent, I'm aware of the fifty-one percent one. Where is that?
You guys actually sent it to me yourselves, so it's in your own paperwork here. Yes, they did. Well, it's Stark County.
Representative.
So it's actually right here in the paperwork that was sent out to us.
Is it referenced like fifteen something?
Fifty-seven oh-two oh-eight fifteen.
That statute was amended at some point.
So it's inaccurate?
So I think that that is probably, yeah, it used to be fifty-one percent, because I was looking it up yesterday, and I found this guideline. I was like, oh, fifty-one percent, and then I went to the statute, and it's been amended since then to sixty, the sixty-six percent, so.
Then why would they send it to us?
I don't know. It's an old, that's what the statute used to read, and I think that probably just hasn't gotten updated in the information that's getting sent out.
It just came to us.
Yeah, in March.
I'm not, I'm not arguing that at all. I'm just telling you.
But you're saying there's some incompetence.
Behave. Okay, so, Faren. I think it's a two-pronged problem, Commissioner Messer, is that we find that we are qualified as farmers, and therefore if you're going to do an exemption for farmers, I think it needs to be more accurate, because I can think of quite a few people that would fall into the same category as us. And I guess I'm saying that it's not accurate or fair, so either get rid of the exemption or make it more accurate. And then the second part of this problem is, because we were unaware that we were out of compliance, and when we were told we were out of compliance and said that we wanted to contest it and that we, basically we disagreed, we were told that they.
Shut down the construction.
They, to shut down the construction and that it was possible that our home, our structure, he didn't say home at the time, he said the structure, would be torn down. And so that part is fear-mongering, as far as I'm concerned, and it's just outlandish that it was even stated.
But evidently, there's a law in the books that you guys can do that.
That's what he said.
In this free country.
Is there a law that states that?
I believe that that is likely a very extreme position that a county could take, but I don't imagine that we would ever use that.
Who would make the determination to send someone out to tear down my house?
I would imagine the commission. Certainly want to be, or court, I guess, maybe. I don't. I'm not gonna make that decision.
Well, I think we need to deal in the reality of it, is that that's not gonna happen.
The reality was it was stated.
Well, I think in any explanation, and I'm not gonna defend anybody, but I, being in the building business, I can understand where if someone puts up a structure without a permit, without the inspections and all those kind of things, that the governing body has the ability to come in and remedy that to include in the extreme situation demolition. We're not there, we're not going there. I'm not worried about it. I know the individual did your construction, and it's obviously a quality individual.
But Mr. Messer, on the same token, if it wasn't a quality, let's say my neighbor has a house built that the county deems a farmer. It doesn't matter then what kind of construction it is, does it?
It could be a hovel for me.
Even though all I do is farm. There's a double, I mean, there's a different standard.
Well, I think we're getting away from the question. The question is whether or not you were required to get a building permit. I would agree that the conversation could take place where those rules could be amended. I've seen the form that you're talking about, fifty-one percent form. That's not a county form. It's a state-created form that is sent down to the counties and the local sub, political subs, to make that determination. So it's not that you can manipulate the numbers or the county can manipulate the numbers. It's a form. You go to Schedule F and you put whatever the numbers are. I mean, I haven't gone through it, but they're hard and fast numbers, and at the bottom, the percentage says you're X, you're required to have a permit, and also taxation exempts it as well, or you aren't. So I think that's where it needs to be focused. If in twenty nineteen, when you put up your property, should have you been required to get a building permit? I think that's the conversation and the answer you're trying to get to, not, because we don't have the ability to change the statute here of whether it's thirty-three percent, fifty-one percent, sixty-six percent. That would be my comment.
Does it?
We have the ability to, we have the ability of what we charge.
For a building.
For a building permit.
Yeah, we do.
And that's just, that's just the one thing that I, and I have struggled with this. I mean, I'm glad the city has taken it over now, so everything stays local, but that is just the one thing that I've always kind of had a little bit of an issue with, is somebody comes in and they want to build a building on their land, and it's almost like the county fines them to get a permit, because then their land is better, so their taxes go up anyway. So since they build on their land, the county then taxes them more, so they get this monthly income or yearly income.
But they pull building permits all across the county.
I understand.
So, and the statute is, is that the building permit is supposed to be reflective of cost.
Yes.
How much does it cost to do the five or six inspections? How much does it cost to do the administrative work? Okay, so that's, and that's not your issue. That's on this side of the issue relative to cost. Your issue is whether or not you were exempt or not exempt from the building.
Well, and the fact that since, I mean, quite frankly, the structure is already built. So what's the point of getting a building permit to do inspections when they're no longer needed, with even you admit and Mr. Schwint admit that they know the contractor and they know that it's up to code?
But that's not the issue.
I'm just stating.
Well, there are a lot of individuals that have been assessed building permit in arrears that felt they had the ability to go put up a structure without a permit and going through and after the fact, or whatever you want to call it, are found, and they have to be appropriate. You know, and so that's where it's at for me.
And the simple fact is, we did not get the building permit because we understood that we were farmers. It is our sole form of occupation between the two of us, and it really, we didn't give it a thought. So this has all come out on the backside of that, and once we started looking at the definitions and the criteria, we were kind of surprised that you have an income bracket on it, because so many farmers fluctuate year by year on income, as you know.
Absolutely, I agree. However, I think it's back to the fact, were you exempt or were you required to get a building permit at the time that you commenced construction?
Depends on your definition of farmer.
It's not my definition, it's the.
I'm assuming you're part of a government. Change starts here.
Said by state law, though.
Yeah.
What's that?
I'd say it by state law, though, but not us.
Okay, but where does change start ever?
At the base.
I mean, honestly, like I said, if I was deemed a farmer, I wouldn't have Mr. Schwint telling me I can't build my house, or I'm gonna tear your house down or whatnot. He wouldn't come out and do that. He'd have no bearings on it. He didn't, he wouldn't. Because it's who the state or the laws deem someone as a farmer, on their private property. On my private property being due to financials, the state or whoever determines that, while we ain't gonna give them that break, and they gotta go on their arthum and be billed according to Mr. Schwint's approval.
Or told that we have to stop our construction, which was stated.
How?
Not a request.
How does that work? One person, it works for this person, but not this person.
Well, the code is clear. If you need a permit and you're building without a permit, the code is clear that you have to be compliant with the permit, and that would include not commencing with any construction.
But Commissioner Messer, the amount.
I would love to go across town and just start building houses anywhere I wanted and just say, whoa, Leonard, guess what? Today I started, poured a basement, poured the footings, dug a hole, and not do it that way. So, I mean, you have to have.
That's city ordinance. I'm county.
Well, if I go out and build in my subdivision where I live, that's county. The same rules would apply.
That's a subdivision. This is a farm state.
I'm not in a subdivision.
You said you were.
Well.
But the thing is, this is my personal farm.
I agree. I'd love you to win your argument. I would love to be able to side on your side of the argument, because then my property would be tax exempt. However, we have to, we're the governing body that has to enforce the rules that are in effect. Now, if you have a proposal or someone has a proposal that comes forth that changes the rules, and they're deemed reasonable.
I gave you what I thought would be the farm exemption more accurate.
But you can't change the rules back to twenty nineteen.
I'm not asking you to. I'm just saying that in our case, we thought it was a no-brainer. We were farmers. We were tax exempt. We weren't worried about it. Our contractor asked if we were farmers. We said yes. We moved on.
Did you turn in that form for the twenty nineteen year, so that? Did you turn in the, did you turn in that form for the twenty nineteen years so that?
No, we had no idea anything was going to occur until.
In arrears, you could have still potentially, in twenty twenty, you could have did the calculation on the form.
We had no idea we were out of compliance until we received a phone call.
When was that?
It was in March, February.
Of, of this year?
This year. That's what I'm saying.
So even in twenty twenty-two, you could still go back, recreate the form for twenty nineteen and we could make, someone could make the determination.
And my point is, it does not matter. We are going to be out of compliance according to your taxes, according to the income tax that you're requiring. And that's my point, is that that is an absurd rule to have for farmers because you know and I know and anybody else here knows that that is not an accurate depiction of what makes a farm and what doesn't. And my argument is whether you call me a farmer or not, my home is on a farm and therefore is a farmhouse. And that is what we are discussing today.
Yep. And I can't disagree with you on that.
Your own definition tells me that my home is on a farm.
And as a county, we don't have the option of making exceptions for that?
I don't know. But if.
I believe as a county with the charges, we have the ability to make exceptions because we had done that before when we did have Forsgren to where there was six different numbers given out to somebody that was building and said, well, will you pay this? Okay, then pay this, then pay this. I mean, if you go build in Dun County compared to Stark County, the, the cost of to build on land, your private land in Stark County is a lot higher than other counties. So the compliance is there, the law is there of a farm. But the compliance of the charge of the building permit is different between county and county.
If you're, if you're using the example that I think you're using, the, the proposal that was made, it's based on valuation. And the one proposal that was made, they didn't have the administrative fee in their potential cost of the permit. So again, I think that's apples and oranges. That doesn't address the Richard's issue that they have in front of our board today.
Oh, it does. Because it was three different numbers. It wasn't just administrative fee.
Um, I'd, I'd have to take another look at that because, whatever.
That's really all we have on this side. I mean, we could go round and round, but I'm not sure you want us to.
Basically, what I'm saying is the system is broken. This, this whole tax structure and stuff. It's not fair in any way, shape or form when you consider, when, yeah, I mean, you're taking winners and losers. Here, you lose, you pay. Nope, you, you're good. You're fine. Even though, I mean, you're, you're just, you know, mile, a couple miles apart. That, how's that right?
Oh, you and I could discuss tax policy for a long, long time. And I think you and I would agree on ninety-five percent of the issues. Because, I mean, the farm exemption conversation has been going on for, for, and it's extremely prevalent in the eastern part of the state where you have huge farmers who build up nest eggs and build up massive wealth. And rather than move into one of the Fargo West, Fargo Horace or whatever, they notch off twenty acres and, and build out in the county strictly to avoid taxation on their, on their residences. So that's a policy, again, we have no control over. The, the state dictates it. The statutes dictate how it's being done. Um, and quite frankly, we don't have the ability to control that. We do have the ability to control cost. I would, I would agree that. But we also have to treat everybody equally. Because if, if exemptions are given, then you're gonna, you know, you potentially see a whole bunch of people come forth.
Well, I will, I will ask you this question to the entire commission. I've, we've laid out our case. We've said what we own, what we don't. We showed you our equipment list. Show you a foot injury from farming. Are we farmers? Do we qualify?
I guess on, on paper, I don't know. For as long as I've known you, I've always considered you a farmer. But, you know.
I mean, that's really where the argument lies for me at the end of the day. But.
Back to why you showed up at my house, Natalie. The squatter you were talking about is three miles west of my place. You didn't need to pull in my place without, without prior notice. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners Natalie Wandler. The farmers that Farren's talking about that are exempt from building permits fill out the farm residence exemption every year. If they qualify, one of the two previous years, their farm stays exempt. They don't pay taxes on their house. They pay taxes on the land. We've never got this form from Farren. He came in one time to fill it out. He didn't qualify. I don't know if he took it with him. I don't know what he did with it. So he knows that this exemption is something that he needs to fill out if he wants, not necessarily that he needs a building permit. I'm not saying that. But he knows that exemption is there. If he qualifies for it, he can file for it. And he can be exempt from a building permit. And he can be exempt from his house paying taxes on his house. That's the only, and it's a Nash, it's a North Dakota form. You have to use your IRS income taxes to file one of the forms. So if it comes back and it says he makes over sixty-six percent, he doesn't pay taxes. If it says he makes fifty-one to sixty-six percent, then he still has to get a bill, he doesn't have to get a building permit, but he's still gonna have to pay taxes. Because we're in that transition of changing the zoning code, which reads now fifty-one percent of your income comes from farming to that sixty-six percent. So that the zoning code reflects what the North Dakota Century Code form says.
So there's, there's a difference between the farm exemption on taxation and the farm exemption on building permit requirements?
No, it's just in two thousand nineteen, it went from fifty-one percent to sixty-six percent. That form got changed. So.
You, you said something about fifty, uh, over sixty-six requires, uh.
Over, if he's over sixty-six percent, he doesn't need a building permit. He doesn't pay taxes on his house.
Okay, between fifty-one and sixty-six.
If he's over fifty-one percent, but not over sixty-six, he's still gonna have to, he's exempt from getting the building permit. But he'll still pay taxes on that residence because the new law states sixty-six percent of your farm income must come from farming.
For both the permit and the taxation or just for the permit?
Well, zoning code says fifty-one percent. Zoning code has not been updated to that sixty-six percent, so they match. We've had discussions with that. Dean and, and Steve and I met a couple times. So, I mean, it's in the process. We just don't know how soon it's gonna get done. But either way, if there's an exemption out there, you know there's an exemption out there, why would you not fill it out and not pay property tax? Like the farmer two miles from him or the farmer in Sheffield that, you know, I mean, there's.
Ms. Wandler, and I think, and I mean, everybody needs to be treated fair and pay them. But why would they, two years after it was done, what made you go out there to take the picture and bring this forward?
Well, I didn't realize it had been out there two years. When we went out there that day, we were looking for this other house. Because Jolynn from nine-one-one sends us a letter or sends us something and says they've got a nine-one-one address. Well, we didn't have a building permit, so we went looking. And when we got out there, Shetler was still in the yard. So until we seen the picture of December of twenty twenty-two, I thought that it just got done in this year or that they were still working on it. Because they were. There was three of Shetler's vehicles out there when we drove up that day.
Mr. Richard, would have you in twenty nineteen felt, fallen into that slot of fifty-one to sixty-six?
Can I approach?
Sure.
Farren had several companies in the oil field and he retired in two thousand sixteen. So his retirement and the interest off of it is not going to, most of the time will not comply with that, with what she's saying, which is what we're trying to say. That that is not an accurate depiction of what makes a farmer and what doesn't. I understand that we've argued about state law and what you can and can't do at this level. But this is what we're trying to tell you, is that regardless of whether we comply to the paperwork, to the tax income bracket, we are still farmers because we are, that is our sole form of employment. That is all that we do. We own over a thousand acres. We've seen our equipment list in every area except income. We fall under the farm definition. Well, we can't fall under the farmer definition. We fall under your farm definition regardless. That is my argument. We're aware that we don't comply with the current paperwork, with the income tax, the application here. We realize we do not comply. That is the problem. That is my argument. Because it's not just us. There's other people I know out there that are in the same boat. And I just find that it's not, it's not an accurate depiction. It's not a fair for many people out there. I mean, quite, quite honestly, we, we, I think you all know that we could pay the building permit if we wanted to. We didn't come up here to make that argument over, what, three to five grand or whatever it's gonna be. I don't know, whatever. My point is, we all know that we probably could pay it. But it is so absurd. And the governmental overreach by some of the statements that were made, made us decide to come up here today and make this argument. And to ask you what your definition of a farmer is and if you think we fall in that bracket or not.
This ain't the first time the county's gotten on my case about something. I literally got a letter in the mail about my grain bins back in two thousand sixteen.
They told us we would have to remove them. Had to remove them because they weren't farmed.
Didn't know what I was doing. Didn't know what the bins are for, but told me to remove them.
We told them to come out and take a look.
I said, come out and take a look. Go crawl up the ladder and look and see what's in them.
And they were full of durum.
It's, what's going on here? Come on.
Anything else for us? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schwint?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Leonard Schwint, Stark County, City of Dickinson, uh, building official. Uh, some of the statements aren't totally accurate as far as there's more to the conversation. I did send a, a, a letter to Mr. Richard. Uh, that letter was dated April twentieth. I believe most of you have that. And in that letter, actually, it, it's, it's our department working with, with the public. It is, uh, when I'm asked of what the, the worst-case scenario can be, taking down a structure without a permit is the worst-case scenario. So that statement is true, but that's the process for the lack of obtaining a building permit without the proper inspections. Uh, Shetler Construction is a reputable contractor, but at no point is anybody exempt from any inspections, whether it's plumbing, mechanical. Uh, again, we, through our process, even the best contractors, licensed professional contractors in Stark County fail inspections. We work with those contractors to remedy those deficiencies. That's, that's actually what we do as a building department. And that's what you get from, from, from my staff and myself. We work with people to meet property compliance. And, and actually, that's what that letter states. I did receive a call prior to the due date. Uh, and that's how we work with people. And, and then it's essentially, it was in, it's in the state's attorney's hands at that time. That's actually what the letter states. So if, if, uh, I have no ability to keep something from feeling threatening for somebody. But after those conversations, I, I could see that. But that is the actual real truth process. Uh, we do have structures that people put up that are a danger. Uh, and we do move forward and, and, and remove those, especially if there wasn't a building permit taken out. That's our job to keep our community safe. And, and as far as the building permit, the cost of it, our, our permit cost is dictated by the square footage of a structure and the use of the structure. And that is actually a, a formula that we adopted from the International Code Council. It is not a random, uh, number that the City of Dickinson comes up. So it is fluent through the City of Dickinson and Stark County. Can you adjust those? Absolutely. But I, I believe the City of Dickinson and, and part of this contract with looking at those throughout the state, our, our permit fees are, are at a reasonable price for, for, for the inspections that we provide. If you have any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Mr. Schwint, you said everybody has to go underneath and go follow the rules, right? And get the codes and do the applications and the, what else did you say in there? They have to go through the regulations, right? That's what you said. Yes? Unless they're a farmer, right? Unless they're exempt. No, no, I'm, I'm asking the question, right?
The, the idea if this is exempt or not, that is up to the county and the state's attorney.
That wasn't the question I asked.
That is actually it. I was, I was brought in.
If a farmer falls under all the regulations, falls under that fifty-one percent, do you have to come in and inspect anything?
That is actually up to the state's attorney in the county, whether you're exempt or not, whether you need a building permit.
Let's say my next door neighbor.
You have to do it.
If my next door neighbor falls under all the criteria and gathers the, everything they need and they are said that they are exempt, state's attorney and the commission, whoever says they're exempt, do you have any authority to go in for a building permit?
There would be no reason for a building permit. And I have not done that.
Why would there be no reason within their structure? Couldn't their structure be unsafe? I mean, I'm just.
If the county says you're exempt from it, that's at your risk. Okay, I have one other state.
But I'm just saying, that seems hypocrite. Like, it, it seems pretty, it's, it's pretty ridiculous because you're sitting here saying that you have to make sure that I'm safe, but it's not necessary for someone else.
If, if you call me and say you're exempt from a building permit, I'm gonna encourage you to get a building permit.
Oh, Mr. Schwint.
Even, even though you're exempt, I would encourage you to get a building.
You said it was a good investment.
Yes.
Are you also a financial advisor?
So you already, I gotta say, you already admitted that you didn't qualify for the, by state law. So there's. But that's the law, the way it is. That's the way it reads. And so you, you needed a permit that year when you built. So that's the bottom line, really. I mean, you can argue all you want all day if you're a farmer or not, but you didn't meet the criteria for that year.
And if we choose not to comply?
Then you could be fined.
You're gonna tear my structure down?
Didn't say you could be fined. I believe it's a class B misdemeanor violating by not having a building permit.
Okay, what's the fine?
Class B misdemeanor, I believe it is. You could be charged with for not having a building permit. Is that correct?
I'd have to, I'd have to double check. A class B misdemeanor carries penalties up to thirty days in jail.
I'll take my thirty days in jail.
He'll get three square meals for once.
Okay, um, we will look into this. Amanda, can we look further into this?
I, I don't know that I need to look further into it. I think at this point, it's just whether, uh, up to the, to the commission, whether they want to waive the building permit fine fee or not. That's, that's really the, the question. Because if you do, then we're done here. If you don't, then that's when I suppose legal has to come into it.
Let's say this board.
If we do nothing, they, they're required to get the building permit. Is that my, my understanding? Whoever has that, that ability.
I guess I just, um, the only part I'm gonna put in there is, I mean, it was over two years ago. There was not any, the, when Shetlers was there, they were in the house doing something in the garage. I mean, the actual completion of the hole.
Commissioner, I thought.
Yes.
Uh, with, with the city staff, if we actually find a structure that's up, whether it was built yesterday or five years ago, we will investigate and, and go through this same process. That what I'm asking this board today is either they're exempt or they're not. That's actually where this should have just been answered from the get-go. If they're exempt, they don't need a billing permit. It didn't need to go to, to the billing department. That's, that's the answer. If they're exempt, they don't need a billing permit. If they're not, they need a billing permit. It, it, it really is that simple.
So, um, Mr. and Mr., Mrs. and Mr. Richards, are there some years you were exempt?
Yeah.
Probably.
Over the years, I've been exempt. Absolutely.
But it just, again, goes back to the year you should have got the permit. That's the year you had to qualify for it.
Well, I was told I didn't need it because he asked me if I was a farmer. I, no, 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 no.
The law is the law, the way, I mean, we can't change. I mean, that's a law. That year.
Well, it doesn't matter. He said, ask me if I was a farmer. I said I was a farmer.
But your own admission, you admitted you were, you were, you wouldn't qualify for that year. So you pretty much admitted.
We didn't realize that at the time.
Yeah, but you also said you wouldn't qualify for it if you did apply for that year, right?
I don't know. I, she does the taxes.
I don't think we will. But the point, my, my argument with you is, are we considered, do you consider us a farmer or not? What do you consider makes a criteria of farmer? It doesn't matter, building exempt or not exempt. I'm asking you, what do you as people individually consider a farmer? And if, if you consider us farmers, then there's something wrong with the law. That's the argument.
I guess I, as well, I have a.
Mission in, in just, in two thousand nineteen, when you started this permit, you weren't a farmer, according to the criteria.
But we did not start a permit. And we were, we have been operating as farmers since two thousand sixteen. But we did not start a permit, and we were, we have been operating as farmers since two thousand sixteen.
I don't understand, but that's when you need the bill, when you bid, the start of the building project, right?
We had no idea that we needed to do anything, to be perfectly honest.
That's the year, though, you had to qualify for it, if you didn't qualify for it, you didn't meet the criteria, then you needed a building permit.
The bottom line is, it isn't just about us, her and me. It's about what goes on from our government in this, in this state.
And how many other people would not qualify?
But, change it!
You, you have exemption for farming, that's what the state wants to do, the state legislature allows you exemption for farming. Wha- what's the difference, why does people live in the city, why should we get some type of exemption then, too?
Why, why shouldn't you? I agree, why shouldn't you?
You gotta, you have a, have laws, the building codes, you have to be, meet the criteria for a building code, we don't put up like Mr. Schwent said, buildings that are unsafe, is that what we want?
My building's fine, just like my neighbor's house.
Don't know that, though, you didn't get a building permit, get an inspection.
It wasn't none of their damn business.
Leonard Schwent himself admitted that he knew it was up to code because of who built it.
And why is it anybody's business but mine? It's my private property, I'm paying the bill. It's my business, why is it your business?
It's no different than my home in the city, too, I needed inspection to be there to, to, what's the difference? I mean, I needed a building permit, I got it, it's the law.
It's the law.
That's the law at that time, that when you had built, that was the law then, and we can't go back and change the law because it doesn't fit.
I'm not arguing with you, Dean, as far as like, we, we were just asked if we were farmers, and we said yes, he said, "Okay, done."
But, yeah, but in two thousand nineteen, you weren't really a farmer, according to the criteria that you had to meet.
Okay, we're not getting anywhere.
No.
I know, I, I understand both sides, but we're not getting anywhere, we can do this till noon. I agree with Fair and Nottingham, I agree with the law, with the board, with the fifty-one percent. I agree this was two years ago. The board needs to make a decision.
By their own admission, they admitted they didn't qualify for that year, so they needed a building permit, I make that motion.
He said we didn't know, he asked if we farmed.
Okay, you know what, no more. And they did not admit, I mean, they just, they said they didn't know. To be fair to, to be fair to them, they did, they did not, we cannot say by their own admission.
They'd have to put a written statement in stating they qualified for it, then, they didn't.
Do we have a motion? Did you make a motion?
Yes, I did.
Can you, eh...
Can you repeat the motion, Dean?
They made the motion, they were making a motion that they need a building permit.
I, I'll second that for discussion, and I thought that we were motioning to exempt or non-exempt. And, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but earlier conversation, I thought eh, Leonard tried to simplify it by saying, "The question is, is it an exempt or non-exempt?" Is, is that, is, is that where you were going, or trying to...
If, if the property is exempt, eh, they do not need a billing permit by the state statute in the county zoning. If they're not, they do need a billing permit for the same reasons.
So... But, you know, I'm just
Yep.
Asking Dean if that's anything you wanted to include in your motion, that, eh, just for clarity purposes, but that's up to you.
As far as, you know, for their criteria, they'd have to provide a written statement that they qualified for the exemption, and then, if they do, then that's fine. But at this time, they don't.
Can they go? Bring their taxes to whoever, and that's to decide whether they qualify or not?
They have to fill out that form that's provided by the state, yeah.
And, and it, in its current content, there is some flexibility, flexibility, because like Natalie says, it's a one-out-of-two-year deal, so if it's, if you're eh, exempt one out of two, you know, that, that would work, I'm trying to help you out here. Eh, but if you're, if you're not exempt two out of two, you need the building permit, you need the taxation, eh, you know, it's about some eh, equal enforcement of the rule, fairness, taxation, eh, that's the statute. We didn't type this up, it's in the legislative, so work with legislators if you wanna change it, I think that, that's a worthwhile discussion. But at this point, based on what we have in front of it, in front of us, eh, I feel you needed the building permit.
And I, I think they should've been approached different, meaning, you know, maybe explained too different, and that would've helped also, than to just say, "Are you farmers?"
But they didn't get that from, by your, and again, eh, eh, Mr. eh, Shetler, said, "Are you farmers?", whatever.
Yes.
Right, okay, so it would've been nice if we, if there had been engagement with eh, authority people over that, you're right, you took...
I gotta keep looking for people to dig into my stuff.
Yeah, no, no, Dave, Dave's a great guy, but, and great builder, but, you know, ma- maybe that was a misstatement by him.
I, I don't think it was a misstatement, it's not really his job as well to make sure you have a permit. If, if he asked the right question, he asked if I was a farmer, and I said I was a farmer, which I am.
Right.
And that's, it wasn't a mis, it wasn't his fault.
Right, I'm not saying it was, but I'm just saying that there's an, enough lapses here where maybe you could've went to the next level and, and those kind of things, so.
Why do I...
No one's immune on this, and like...
Right, but as, as, as a individual, why would, why, why do we have to constantly keep looking for these rules and regulations?
A call from...
By the county, and the state and whatnot, we gotta con... It just doesn't make any sense. I, I, granted, you, you said it's law, Dean, but it doesn't make it right.
I know, but it's no different when you're trucking, eh, when you had, you were trucking, eh, a company, eh, there, too, you had to comply to all the rules and regulations then, too, right? You had to check into, it was your job, responsibility to do that, right?
Yeah, yeah, but...
This is their responsibility to make sure you're complying with it, too.
He just asked if I was a farmer, and I, which I am, and I did, and I told him, yes.
But you still have some responsibility to make sure you're complying.
But why, I was just building an addition on my house, it doesn't cost the county, it doesn't cost the state, it, my roads ain't different. Nobody, nobody coming out and gravelled my road from the county, nobody came out. Eh, I mean, the electrical inspector was there, the plumber inspector was there, that was all on the contractors. But nothing really changes, I did not cost the county, the state, the federal government, anything, by just putting an addition on my house. It, my point is, is it's, it's, it's what makes us fair. I didn't cost you anything, I didn't cost the county. I just put an addition that I paid for on my house. I paid taxes, I pay my taxes, I do all that stuff. It doesn't make it right, what you guys are trying to tell me I have to do, and, and I know this ain't your fault either. Right. But you're the ones we have to come to. And it's, I mean, you're the people that can start changing. I can see your point of it, and I see the state's point of it, because you're a farmer. Okay, I'm not, okay. You're asked, you're a farmer, we have no idea what other income comes in. You know, you might have, eh, I'm not referring to you at this point, but whoever the farmer is, might have a, eh, a wife that is a doctor and makes five hundred thousand dollars a year, well, at that point, he's not, they're not in that same category, but yes, you're a farmer, because he asked you if you're a farmer. So at this point, you're a hobby farmer, because your income's coming from your doctor-wife.
Okay, the question was called, I'm sorry, we must... There's a motion on the floor in a second. I believe that was to exempt or non-exempt.
Right.
Well, I have a motion that it's a building permit is required, so...
So they're, they're not exempt.
So you wanna, you wanna amend it to add not...
I can, yes. They're not exempt, unless they, unless they file the proper written statement that they are.
I concur with my second.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Um, ten AM, Board of Equalization. Sorry, we are a little late.
Um, I believe we have to recess the regular board meeting and make this its own meeting.
I think that's right.
Okay, we will, um, recess the officials, um, county commission meeting. Do we need a motion then, to recess that?
I'll make it if it's appropriate.
Okay. Need a motion and a, then I need a second to recess.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we will open up the meeting.
Um, we also have our industrial appraiser here, he has, I have a sheet, his sheet in your binder, and I also laid one of these on, in front of your desk, this is just a, this is a wrap-up sheet of this whole thing. I don't know if you have questions on it, it's, I mean, he does our industrial appraisals every year, so there's not a lot of changes. But we will start with the City of Bellfield. And for twenty twenty-two, the market value for the City of Bellfield is fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and seven, fifty-eight million eight hundred seventeen thousand five hundred, which is up one point five, eh, one point four seven six million from last year, which makes the taxable value two million seven hundred, two million seven hundred forty thousand three twenty-six. They had new construction of twenty thousand seven hundred, so not a lot. All of the small cities, all of the county residential and commercial structures went up by five percent on the structure only, so their property didn't go up five percent on the total property, it was just on the actual structures. That was strictly to keep my median over that ninety percent, so that we didn't end up with the state adjusting our values come August. Um, so we'll need a motion to approve these values on each one of the small cities, the City of Dickinson, and then the county as a whole.
Okay.
So if we wanna go ahead and take care of Bellfield, or if anybody's here from Bellfield that has questions or would like to speak. Sarah, do we have anybody on there? No? Okay.
Madam Chairman, I move that the, eh, county accept the market value of the City of Bellfield at fifty-eight million eight hundred seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, with the taxable value at two million seven hundred forty thousand three hundred twenty-six dollars for the year twenty twenty-two.
Okay, you have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, on to the City of Southheart. Their mark, market value is thirty-seven million four hundred twenty-nine thousand seven hundred, which is up one point seven two five million. Their taxable value is one million seven hundred twenty-five thousand four oh four. They had new construction, a commercial of three hundred seventy-five thousand one hundred, and new commercial construction of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred.
Madam Chairman, I move that the market value of the City of Southheart be established at thirty-seven million four twenty-nine seven hundred, and taxable value be established at one million seven hundred twenty-five thousand four oh four for the calendar year of twenty twenty-two.
Do you have a motion, or we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Chair?
Oh.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Did you hear that last motion, or the numbers, then?
I think so, yes.
Okay.
I do have a copy of this sheet that I could just give her, too, for minutes. Okay, so on to Gladstone, their market value is fourteen million nine hundred and seventy-four thousand, up six hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred, which makes their taxable value six hundred and seventy-nine thousand three thirty-eight. They had no new construction in the City of Gladstone.
And that was, was that at a, like, a five percent increase also, then?
Yep, they're, on structures.
Okay, on structures.
All commercial and residential structures throughout the whole county got it.
Okay.
So, Madam Chairman, I move that the, eh, City of Gladstone market value be established at fourteen million nine hundred seventy-four thousand, and the taxable value be established at six hundred seventy-nine thousand three hundred thirty-eight for the calendar year twenty twenty-two.
Do you have a motion for the tax on Gladstone, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, on to the City of Taylor, their market value is thirteen million eight hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred, which is an increase of seven, six hundred ninety-one thousand four hundred from the twenty twenty-one. The twenty twenty-two taxable value is six hundred thirty-one thousand nine forty-five. And they had new construction of four hundred fifty-nine thousand in residential.
Madam Chairman, I move that the City of Taylor market value be established at thirteen million eight hundred fifty-seven thousand seven hundred, the taxable value be established at six hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars for the calendar year of twenty twenty-two.
Okay, we have a motion on the table for Taylor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, now we're on to the City of Richerton, their market value for twenty twenty-two is seventy million five hundred twenty-four thousand nine ten, which is up by two point five six million. Their taxable value is three million three hundred sixty-six thousand four twenty, and they had new construction in residential of six hun, six thousand dollars. They also did annex the rest of the Halliburton. Halliburton, the, the gentleman that bought the Halliburton plant is extending his rail facility to go out past what was in city limits, so they annexed that, but it did happen after February first, so it won't be on that, on the, this, it'll still be on the county's tax roll for this year.
Madam Chairman, I move that the City of Rich, Richerton market value be established at seventy million five hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, with the taxable value be established at three million three hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred and twenty dollars for the calendar year of twenty twenty-two. Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, I'll have Joe come up and do the cities.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, everybody, eh, Joe Hirschfeld, assessor for the City of Dickinson. And eh, the true and full valuation for the City of Dickinson for twenty twenty-two is two billion six hundred ninety-nine million seven hundred fifty-eight thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars, eh, with one billion one hundred and four million eh, being commercial, and nearly one point six billion being residential. That is an increase from last year of two billion five hundred sixty-two million five hundred fifty thousand four hundred forty-four dollars. We had new construction of, in twenty twenty-two, eh, commercial of ten million eight hundred thousand. Eh, we had a decrease to commercial of nine million three hundred eighty thousand dollars. And the residential, we had increases of fourteen million dollars eh, compared to decreases of forty-nine thousand, so total new construction to the city was just shy of twenty-five million, with nine and a half million of decreases, with changes of eh, property type, if you're thinking like Halliburton and...
Mr. Hirschfield, where are these numbers in our packet?
Yeah.
We don't have these numbers?
I wasn't provided any of that, the instance information.
Got extra sheets, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Does this mean you gotta start over?
No. We'll give you a pass.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
And sorry, yes, start over so we can follow, please.
As I was saying, true and full value for 2022, commercial was just over one billion one hundred thousand. Residential of just shy of one billion six hundred thousand for a total valuation of two billion six hundred and ninety-nine million seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. That's up from last year's two billion five hundred and sixty-two million five hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars. So there was new construction of just shy of twenty-five million dollars to the city of Dickinson last year and just shy of nine point five million dollars of decreases. So new construction, pretty simple. Any new buildings built, remodeling, those kind of things. The decreases could come from demolition of properties or change in classification like Halliburton where the school bought that. Their value is now exempt and so their value taken away, that would be included within that number. So the taxable value then for 2022 is one hundred and twenty-seven million ten thousand two hundred and nine dollars, up from last year's one hundred and twenty million six hundred and seventy-three thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars. And the new construction part of that, seven hundred and five thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Commercial properties, our median sales ratio was ninety-one point three percent, so just above tolerance. And the residential sales were at eighty-six point five percent. We were out of tolerance. Being out of tolerance then required us to increase residential values to bring them back within tolerance. With our commercial properties, after we went through the state formula that includes the, the new construction, we ended at ninety point one percent. So I mean, just barely within tolerance with no, with no, what's the word? Wasn't feeling real safe with that number, if you will, no confidence that we maybe wouldn't fall below that. So went ahead and elected to increase the apartments, the value of the apartments. A few years ago, we'd reduce value by twenty percent to standard-sized apartments and thirty percent to, to large apartments. And so we went and removed that obsolescence that we applied. So apartments are back valued in line with what the rest of commercial properties are. That then brought our commercial value up to ninety-four percent and left our residential at ninety-one point seven percent. So is tolerance ninety percent then or what? Ninety percent to one hundred percent, yes. At the city board of equalization, we had two protesters. One residence, his property went up. Just around fifty thousand dollars. The city went ahead and elected to reduce his value to six hundred and twenty thousand. I think it was at six forty-nine. I left that paper on my desk. So a slight decrease to that one residential owner. And then we had a low-income housing tax credit apartment property. They rent to low-income persons. However, they also leave themselves eligible for government reimbursements and as well as some of the tax credit benefits with that that came from not having to pay a significant chunk of the construction costs. And so those were the two entities that came before us protesting. I have a question. So tolerance comes from where? The state board of equalization in, in the spring, February, March at that meeting will set the tolerance for the upcoming year. And so there's a, a board, a ratio or something that you, or I mean, you set the taxes or the value? And that value has to fall in with the state? So, so the state law says properties are supposed to be valued at their median ration, at their medium ratio at a hundred percent of market value. So if you've got nine properties that are all alike and the, the middle one of those nine, the fifth one sells for two hundred thousand, then those nine should carry a value of two hundred thousand to be valued at one hundred percent. So then that, that market value versus the tax value? So then the, the state allows us a ratio to give us a little bit of wiggle room to get our numbers to fit within. So we're within tolerance. We're not required to change values to kind of help even out the flow, if you will. So they give us a lower end value, so that two hundred thousand dollar median could be a hundred and eighty thousand. So as long as we're valuing those properties between a hundred and eighty and two hundred thousand, we're considered to be within tolerance. No, that. I appreciate the explanation. Absolutely, appreciate the, the question.
So the, like the ninety point one, I mean, you had to go up to ninety-four percent. I mean, is that just? You didn't think that you would be able to keep the tolerance at that level?
That, that is correct. I fully anticipated that we were going to have protests come and that to leave room for the boards to be able to decrease any properties. I needed to be able to give them that room. If we were at ninety point one percent and they wanted to lower a value, then we might fall below that requiring us to increase everybody's values then. And I wanted to avoid that. So what makes the values drop like that to, to where it'd be below, be below tolerance? Changing market conditions. So with the, the residential properties between last year and this year, we're up about six to seven percent. So if we're at ninety-one point seven like we are now and we see another six percent increase in values, we'll be below that ninety percent tolerance again and will require another increase next year.
So your median ratio sales, that's based, the median ratio formula is based on actual sales, correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so if everybody's assessed across the city, they don't have access to all the sales. But when you, you pull actual sales to make that ratio and so your goal is to get the commercial and residential actual median ratio between ninety and one hundred percent.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Madam Chairman, I would move that the city of Dickinson true and full value be established at two million, two billion six hundred and ninety-nine million seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-eight with a taxable valuation of one hundred and twenty-seven million ten thousand two hundred and nine dollars for the calendar year of 2022.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander. Chair votes aye, motion carried.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, on to the county. So for the total county, structures, all structures went up five percent. Agland actually went up three percent because we were under that ninety percent tolerance. So our total market value for the county by itself without the small cities is one billion three hundred and fifty-seven million ni, eight hundred and forty-eight thousand six seventeen. Whoo, that was a big number. Let's go to taxable, that's way easier. Sixty-five million nine oh four two hundred. We add in the small cities, which is a hundred and ninety-five million six oh eight eight twenty-two, which gives the county a total market value of one billion five hundred and fifty-three million four fifty-seven thousand four thirty-nine. That makes our taxable value seventy-four million seven sixty-eight two seventy-five. Add in Joe's numbers, we end up with a total market value for the county of four billion two hundred and fifty-three million two hundred and four, thirty-four thousand seven sixty-seven, which is an increase of about eleven million dollars over last year. We did have new construction in the county of seven million two hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred in residential and one million eight hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred in commercial. That does not include Dustin's industrial appraisals, appraisals that he does for us as our industrial appraiser for the county. So them are our numbers, including the industrial appraisals. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at this sheet. Dustin is here. If you have any questions or need explanation on anything, he can sure answer any questions for you now or after the meeting, whichever.
So we had quite the increase from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two.
Yep. Well, there was almost nine million, well, nine point one million in new construction, then plus the five percent on the buildings, residential and commercial buildings, and then the three percent on the ag land. So yes, there was quite the increase.
So, Madam Chairman, I would move that the assessed val, market value of the Stark County properties be assessed at or said at one billion three hundred and fifty-seven million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars for market value and sixty-five million nine hundred four thousand two hundred dollars for taxable value for the calendar year of 2022.
Okay, there's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Messer.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, and is there anybody in the public that has anything about values? Just to make sure, questions, anything? Okay, thank you guys very much.
We will adjourn then the board, the, the equalization, tax equalization meeting. And we will go into.
Do we need to reconvene or?
I make a motion to resume your regular meetings since you made a motion to, to recess it.
Okay.
I'll move that we reconvene or re, resume the normal scheduled county commission.
I second.
Okay, and with that, we'll go into break.
Do you want a vote on that?
Yes, all in favor.
All right.
We will come, we will come back at eleven fifteen. We will come, we will come back at eleven fifteen. Okay, the first amount is for Martin Construction. The bid is one million, eight hundred, ninety-one thousand, thirty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
Which one, that was Martin?
Martin Construction, again, one million, eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, thirty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. This bid is for Edward Schwartz Construction. The bid is one million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars and twenty-three cents. Again, Edward Construction, one million, four twenty-eight, nine eighty-six, twenty-three. This is for Holibichuk Construction. The bid is one million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Again, one million, three seventy-six, two twenty-five, seventy-three. The last bid will not be opened or recognized because nothing was on the addendum.
So we just have the three bids?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think we'll give the bids to the engineer and they can go back and tally them up, make sure there was no errors in the bid tabulation, and come back, and so we can make a word before we adjourn.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is Missy Bronco.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Excuse me. I'm here to represent Aspire &amp; D. I'm the Executive Director of Aspire &amp; D., which is Houses, one, a program called Healthy Families, North Dakota, and we're here specifically requesting some funding to help support our program in the Stark County area. So Healthy Families is a program designed to support families as they become parents. And I hope, I know Karen and I sent you information, so I'm assuming you all have received just two pages with some information about Healthy Families. We specifically try to support parents who have histories of things like childhood trauma, intimate partner violence, parental health, or substance use issues. And one of the handles you received talks about evidence of effectiveness. And what I just want to point out on there is we follow the Healthy Families America model, are accredited through them. So they do a lot of studies and research on how we help to reduce things like low birth weight, fewer homeless families, less families in the child protective systems, reduce pregnancy complications, and those types of things. So the study and research, just when we look at really just a financial level, really helps reduce costs later in the county by enrolling families to help to get them on a good start. Our families that we work with primarily are from the prenatal time until their child is three. We support them on positive parenting, developmental screenings, things for parents, we really try to support their financial abilities, mental health, substance use, and those types of things to help them be as strong as a family as they can. One of the questions I know asked when we were here, just sharing about the program a few months ago, was about the funding. And so the, one of the last paragraphs I just want to point out, talks about, we do receive funding from the Human Services, Department of Human Services in North Dakota, and it's about fifty-nine percent of our funding comes from them. They fully expect us to partner in our communities for additional funding to help make those programs strong across the state. And so you can see some information in there about our current, our budget for the FY23, which will start in July, and what we have a gap of. So we're, today we're respectfully requesting about ten thousand dollars to help keep that program going in our county and, and continue to serve those families. Just on a side note, too, outside of just the real specific program of Healthy Families, we also provide car seats to families who are in need, as well as cribs. And we also, and I'll let Emily talk about that just a little bit, we have a store that is free items for families. So I would like Emily, she's our coordinator here in Dickinson, to talk about that, just because we are also strong community partners, and families can access any of those things even if they're not enrolled in our program. So Emily, I'll just let you spend a few minutes talking about the store.
So we have a store, or a free store, in the basement of our office, and we have set it up to collect donations from community partners. And right now, we have more than enough baby, toddler, and child clothing to support the community at this point. We do partner with the House of Manah as well, I'm on that board, but, so the stuff that we don't have room for, then we donate to the House of Manah as well. But our store is free to any family in our program, and then once a year, we open it up to the entire community as well. So parents can come in and get items they need. We have breast pumps, bottles, diapers, wipes, clothes, toys. And we open it up to the community around the holiday time, because we also have a room that is full of donated toys and games, and those sort of things, so families can come in and purchase, purchase, but get gifts for their families that they need. As Missy mentioned, we do have car seats, we're trained car seat technicians, so we have car seats that we're able to provide to anyone in the community that may not be able to afford one. A lot of the times, we get a call from the hospital that, you know, family just had baby, they need a car seat, they weren't prepared, and so we can go up there and provide that education as well as the car seat. Same with cribs for kids, and Safe Sleep, we provide them with a pack and play, but also that education. So when anyone walks into our office, they're not just getting things, they're also getting a full education on how to properly use any equipment or anything that, you know, they take away. And then we also offer them our services as well.
I was just going to highlight one other thing. We have a really strong partnership with the Rough Rider Human Service Zone and do receive referrals from them, especially when it's, they maybe receive a report, but there's not need to remove the child, but they recognize the family is experiencing a lot of risks. And so they'll refer the family to us, and our goal is to help partner with that family, to strengthen that family so children are not removed from the home. And so it helps, it's a great partnership we have with the Human Service Zone to really help to make sure families have those resources and support, so they don't enter the foster care system.
Good. How about choice? Do you also? How about Choice? Do you also have a rapport with Choice Clinic?
Connect Medical.
Or Connect, I mean, yes.
Yes. Yes, so we do have a very close relationship with Connect Medical. Last month, we received five referrals from them. And this is a partnership that we've been growing since we, we started Healthy Families out here. Another great partnership that we have is with the women's prison down in New England as well as, you know, the jail here. We do work with moms and dads who are incarcerated as well. And we're seeing great success with families enrolled in our programs that once they're released back into the community, they continue our services and are able to find housing, get jobs, childcare, and all of that stuff. And so as it's mentioned in the handouts that Missy sent earlier, that prevention is much more affordable and cheaper than, you know, intervention and treatments. And so we've seen great success with, you know, parents who have been incarcerated as well.
And as Emily said, our goal is, you know, many of those parents exit into the community and to help keep them strong in the community, working with their children and not end up incarcerated again.
Yes, Mr. Xander.
I just, a quick question. How's your baby formula supply?
I love that question. So we have six cans of formula right now. And that's the lowest we've ever been at. And the formula that we have right now is not the highly sought after formula that everybody's needing. But we have been able to provide formula to families in need. We had received a donation a couple of months ago, a plant-based formula for children that have allergies. And we were able to help three families with that donation because it was not accessible anywhere else in the town or the state at this point.
So you're basically in the same shape pretty much everybody else is?
Yeah, we rely on donations when it comes to stuff like formula and stuff. So if it's not on the shelves, then it's not on our shelves either. But we do have a few cans that we're able to, you know, provide for anyone in that emergency situation.
Yeah, and then one other question, in reading your summary here and some of your comments about partnerships that you have with other agencies or whatever. And do you, do you, at your, provide services for mental health? Or do you refer them?
We refer them. So we provide screenings for mental health. We do depression screenings for every family in our, in our program. And we don't do just depression screenings for moms. We do it for all the caregivers involved with the, with the child. And so we're monitoring that. And then we also have a substance use screening that we use for every family as well. And if they're indicated a high risk for substance use or depression, we refer out to local providers as well.
Okay, so you know, mental health is getting to be a bigger and bigger and bigger issue and more discussion practically every day, especially if you watch the cable news networks. Are you seeing that there's a shortage or, or mental health services in the area? Are they adequate or short or?
So in my professional opinion, yes, we are in a mental health desert. We, the, the providers that we do have, have wait lists. And we've had families on waitlist for four to six weeks just to be evaluated by a mental health professional. And so what we can do in that meantime through our services is we have training and through our different curriculums and resources that we have access to. We're able to help families manage that depression at a very, you know, top level just, you know, just to get them through and continue to support them through until they're able to seek, you know, treatment from a mental health professional.
And a lot of our focus within that too is making sure that child is safe. So if mom or dad are struggling with substance use or mental health, it's making sure do they have the supports or safety plans so that that child is safe. So if, if they're not doing well or unable to get out of bed because of depression, how are they caring for their child? So a lot of our conversations are around that.
How do you, would, do you mind if I ask you what your operating budget is for the year?
So we have sites across the state. So I apologize, I don't have my full, but when we break it down for this, our operating budget here in the document you have is 194,505. And that is with three full-time staff here. Typically, when we look at our budget, about 85 to 90% of our costs are staff costs because they're the ones doing the work. So we're, we have very little costs outside of our staff just really working directly with families.
Where's your physical location?
So our physical location is located next to St. John's Lutheran Church. We're actually at 544 First Street West. So it's a small gray and white house that we've been phenomenally blessed with. And we're able to see families in the office and, you know, go to their homes if they, there's different situations where families don't feel comfortable with us because they're maybe living with a friend or a different family member or couch surfing and don't have that place to go. So they're able to come to our office as well for visits. And as Missy mentioned, there's, we do have three full-time staff here in Dickinson. And I brought my staff and our intern with us today as representation. And so what we also see a lot too, and with a lot of grants and funding, is people want to pay for stuff. And because we don't have a lot of stuff that we need, it gets really difficult to cover, you know, administration costs and, and salaries and, and health insurance and everything for staff. And so, you know, with help from the county, we will be able to bridge that gap. And as our, our caseloads get, you know, fuller and fuller, we're going to have to bring on more staff as well. And so, you know, with the help of the county and, and the city as well, we're able to continue to grow.
Yeah, I, I know a little bit about your services and so forth. And I think you guys are providing a much-needed benefit for people. And, and I, as well as all of the commission, congratulate you and thank you for your work.
So your staff, is you two plus the three?
So Missy is our Executive Director and she works out of her home in Richardson. And then-
Not part of the staff then?
She's, she's up here, we're right here. And so I'm the program coordinator for basically the whole western side of the state. And then we have Savannah, Amanda, and Emma as our staff and interns and-
Emma's our new intern as of yesterday. So we try to also partner with the universities to give them an opportunity.
What kind, what kind of education do you need to get a job with you guys?
Well, we have many social workers, nurses, psychology students, or psychology majors where people have graduated that, so variety. A lot of staff have backgrounds in different things like working with domestic violence shelters, working in incarcerated populations, criminal justice. We try to have a variety of, of experience.
And part of our onboarding too is all staff is required to complete over 100 hours of training through our accredited Healthy Families America mod, model and through our curriculum as well as all the other screenings and additional things that we do within, within the program. So like Missy said, staff, we all come from different walks of life with different educational backgrounds. But really what it takes is somebody who's passionate about, you know, helping families get on the right track or stay on the right track. And, you know, we provide phenomenal training for, for everyone. So everyone comes in with, you know, well-educated help.
So you get help from the city also?
No.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
Most of it's a lot of grant writing.
Okay.
We approach counties and like I said, about 59% is from state dollars. Any other questions?
You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you guys do some fundraising too, right? If I'm not mistaken, I think you had a little 3K not all that while back?
Yeah, we do, we do some fall, smaller fundraisers out here. We're planning on, you know, continuing to do those to purchase, you know, things that we need within the office such as, you know, the boring stuff like office supplies. But also things like breast pumps that are really hard to come by when you don't have the financial means to go get them. And a lot of the arguments that we hear when we're writing these grants is like, well, does insurance cover that? Insurance will reimburse you for it. And so if you don't have the funds initially to go get the breast pump and if you're a working mom or trying to, you know, create that supply so you can go back to work, it's very difficult for moms to, to bounce back. And as a mother or as a parent, if you're unable to provide for your child, that really affects your mental health as well. And we've seen moms that just, you know, break down and the stories that we hear because they're not able to, you know, feed their child due to lack of supplies and equipment. So these smaller fundraisers that we do within our areas help fund things like breast pumps and breast milk storing, storage bags and that kind of stuff.
And you've, you've come to us in the past for many other years?
We've just presented on, we wanted to share awareness of our program and educate everyone on what we do and who we are. And so this is our first time requesting funds.
And then, did you guys present at Power of 100 a coup, about a month ago too?
That was, we, with Aspire &amp; D, we have a program called Violence Free.
Oh, that's right.
So it was our Violence Free program.
And we did present at Power of 100 before we were Aspire. When we were still under Lutheran Social Services, we had presented two-
Almost two years.
Almost two years ago. So we have not gone back with Healthy Families to Power of 100.
I know we have a budget coming up, but I, I guess I would like to see that. I think we have money in our fund that we would be able to give them $10,000.
$10,000, I'm sure we can find out.
Thank you. And if at any point you have any other questions, we're happy to come back and answer those or speak again.
Let's say the board.
I make a motion, we give them the $10,000 that they're requesting. Yeah, where can I get it from?
Do you want it for the 2023 budget or to, no?
No.
No?
No? Okay, then I would just do it from the-
General, okay.
You had a second before discussion.
I'll second it.
Okay.
For discussion and figure out where we're going with what.
Okay, there was a motion and a second. We just have to decide where we're going to take it out of. And you had said, Ms. Richard-
You can do general fund or you can do COVID money as well too, either one.
I think general. General fund, okay with board?
Is that part of your motion then?
Yes, sir. I'll, I'll amend my second to the general fund.
General.
General fund. Call for the question.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for what you do.
Come and see us again next year.
Earlier, like in October.
Yeah.
At budget time.
Budget time.
Okay, August.
Okay, planning and zoning.
Okay, I'll be handling that because our planning and zoning director, Mr. Joseph, is on vacation. We had actually seven items on our agenda for the meeting last week. First one was a public hearing for RZ 0522 for Land Sea Sixters requesting a rezoning from ag to rural residential, a parcel located on the east one half of the southwest corridor of section 25, township 140, range 95 west, containing approximately 80 acres. And this would be an area that would have 10 lots and ranging from five acres to 9.87 acres under that. And it, any questions or anything you wanted to add to Mr. Robertson?
Kenzie Robertson, Highlands Engineering. I would just add that that would go with the plat that we're going to be hearing later in this meeting.
And I'd make a motion, did I guess at that meeting there it was approved by our Planning and Zoning Commission? There was nobody spoke against it or anything on it. So I'd make a motion that we approve this request.
I'll second that.
Okay, approved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And being we're on that, I'll go drop down to, there was a public hearing that was head for FSP 01-22 for Concept Properties LLC is requesting approval of final subdivision plat for the Prairie Plains subdivision located in the east one half of the southwest corridor of section 25, township 140 north, range 95 west, containing approximately 80 acres is the same property here as a final plat on that. And I guess only that would add to that, there's a, a road that was going there which considered, I considered an extra road that was going to go in there on it for a, but would be not put in there until this, the land developed to the west later. But there's agreement in there, right? Would you want to add anything more to that or?
Once again, Kenzie Robertson, Highlands Engineering. I believe that we've met all the requirements within zoning code and all the different staff requirements that have been brought to our attention to this point. One of the requirements is, Mr. Franchek had mentioned, was the addition of that road easement, 35G Street. This was included in order to follow with Article 71116 in the zoning code, which states that cul-de-sacs, if approved, shall not be longer than 500 feet. Since the last planning and zoning meeting, the owners of this property have met with a couple of members of the commission and voiced their displeasure. We're now requesting that the commission consider removing that requirement to include that road in this development. I believe that the intent of the code was to limit the distance that any emergency vehicles may have to back, back out and then also to alleviate any congestion if that may be needed. In this case, I don't think either one of these items should be of a concern if this road were not installed. As far as emergency vehicles turning around, this won't be an issue until there are houses built on the, on this development, at which point those driveways could be used just like the proposed turnaround at 35G Street. As far as the congestion, there are only 10 lots in this development that would be able to use the cul-de-sac. With that few of lots, congestion should really never be an issue. And based on the number of houses and that code, in my opinion, should be based on number of lots or number of houses within a development versus that length of roadway. Otherwise, nearly every driveway or section line that leads to a single driveway within the county would be outside of compliance with, with that code. I've printed off a few copies of what this plat would look like that I can hand out. And with that, I'd guess I'd ask for any questions or comments from, from the commission.
Mr. Robertson, what is, looking at the plat, I don't have my, what is the distance from the center of the cul-de-sac to the 35G street southwest that would dump into basically an open field, correct?
From the cul-de-sac to 35G?
Yes, the short distance.
It's just under 500 feet to comply with that 500-foot requirement.
Okay, so is that lot seven that it's adjacent to? I can't, I'm sorry, lot two?
Three and, three and seven, yeah.
Okay. So, there, yeah, seven.
Thank you.
So in being familiar with the area, I guess my, my question is the need for it. I understand that there's an agreement in place to just have the easement in place so that in the event the road, the property to the west gets developed, that the road would have to be developed?
Yeah, so the way that the development agreement was written is that currently there is the easement in place and the owners of this development would currently just install a turnaround, basically an approach there that would extend 70 feet. And then if this property to the west were ever developed within the next 10 years, they would pay to install that road the rest of the way to the west.
The 80 acres adjacent to the west, 35th Street is a good gravel road on the south edge of that property?
Yes, it's a good road on the south edge.
And then on the west side of that adjacent 80 acres is also, what is that, 10?
I believe it's 103?
103. So I guess my comment is, is if someone wants to develop the adjacent 80 acres, that developer, he or she would have good gravel roads on both the south and west edge of that property.
Correct, they could be able to connect at two different locations.
And by having that dump-in street that, that is on the proposed plat, basically would dictate to that developer how they develop their lots.
Right, correct.
Which I just, and- Which I just, and you know, on my drive home, and I understand there's the 600 or 500-foot regulation that you're talking about. But on my drive home, there's Ridgeview Estates. There's got to be 15, 1600 lineal feet of road there. There's no dump-off there. There is Green River Estates, I believe that's called Butch Pribbles Development. There's at least maybe close to three quarters of a mile. There's no dump-off out of that. There is Copper Leaf on top of the hill. Again, no dump-off. And I, I just think we're overthinking this. If the road is there and it's 60 feet wide or whatever was dictated, I, I just think this is, that's a little overkill on, on what, how, what we're regulating and what we're asking for. I, I, I agree with your proposed change in the plat without that area. You go up to Maury Pine subdivision up there, they dictated that several years ago. And now the new company comes in and develops the land adjacent to it and what they go back. No one's taking care of the easement, all this kind of stuff. And now they vacated the easement. So these rural subdivisions, people are attracted to that for a reason. You have 10 lots. It's not like it's Grand Central USA where we have to worry about the traffic there. I just, I think, and again, it's up to the board, but I just think that dump-in street is just a little overkill, so.
I agree.
I don't know if, if there's, you know, if there's an opportunity for a motion here to accept an amended plat, but whatever it is, I think we should move forward. I think the, Mr. Sickler may want to speak to it as well, but I, I know you want to get going on some stuff here this summer. And I don't know that we need to send it back to P&amp;Z or not.
I, I guess I have a quick question. The, this road that you're talking about, this is, this is required underneath the Stark County zoning and planning ordinance? Is that my understanding or no?
So.
Yes, it is. You're talking about this because it can be over, a cul-de-sac can be over 500 feet.
So are you effectively looking at a variance? Or am I maybe overthinking?
That's what you'd have to do is you'd have to have a variance on it to, you know, for this to comply. Because the planning and zoning agreed on this where they, they had the agreement that they put together, so. If it was, if it was deed down the lower.
That seems to be how, when you're looking at, when, if you're looking at our zoning ordinance, if you're looking at getting away from the uniformity of it, then I think you're asking for a variance, right? Maybe I'm mistaken.
Yeah, we, we could be, if that's what.
That's what you'd have to do because I know we have another plat that's involved this. And they were, they were told they're going to have to put in for variance if they want to go with the length over the 500 feet.
For an order for them to get a variance, it has to go back to P&amp;Z.
I don't, I don't think that's the case, no. But I think that that would probably be what the request that you were looking at is that you'd want a variance from our zoning ordinance to allow to, you know, do away with this road because that's a variance from your zoning ordinance. At least that way it's clear that the board has approved it.
Is this a public hearing on this or?
No, the public hearing was had.
P&amp;Z.
So I guess, any other discussion on this, I guess, do you want to talk about variance or are you going to make the motion?
And I can tell.
I will, but I'd like to hear.
The variance, the variance definition, right? I just looked it up to make sure. Is a relaxation of the terms of these regulations where such variance will not be contrary to public interest and where owing to conditions peculiar to the property and not the result of the actions of the applicant, the literal enforcement of these regulations would result in unnecessary and undue hardship. I think that's essentially exactly what you're arguing or stating, right?
And that little road that was requested on there, I mean, that little side road that was requested on there, those people are not really planning on selling and that is not a road. I mean, so they would be building a road into a field.
They were just going to agreeing to build that road if that developed to the west. They weren't going to have to do it right away. There was just going to be a turnaround there.
Well, having said that, Madam Chairman, I would move that we approve the Prairie Plains subdivision plat under however you want to label the, the plat without the 35 G or whatever.
I would say in granting them the variance.
Yep.
Okay, granting them a variance subject to the rest of the agreement, the development agreement and all that other good stuff. Is that acceptable?
Yeah, so in the development agreement, items two, I got copies of that as well. Two and three would then be removed.
Thank you.
Two and three?
Two and three were eliminated. So this is just, what would the updated one would be? Items two and three just dealt with originally constructing that hammerhead turnaround for 35G Street and then constructing it in the future if that were ever developed. Those would just be removed from this.
Two and three, I'm showing four on there.
Uh, no.
In the development agreement.
Oh, in your development, okay. I haven't talked all about our actually.
So, yeah, that development agreement was removed or was included with this plat at the planning and zoning meeting. There's three items in there. The first one dealt with the construction of 102P Avenue to construct that to Stark County standards and that would be paid for by Concept Properties. Item two included the construction of the turnaround at 35G Street. And then item three dealt with the construction of 35G Street if the property to the west were ever developed.
But under the current development agreement, the developers responsible for, for building 102P to our county standard, correct?
Correct.
And that's agreeable to you, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
And there you made that motion, correct, Neil?
Yes, however it needs determined.
Right.
So you probably, Commissioner Messer, amend the motion including two and three?
Yes, the variance and elimination of items two and three on the development agreement.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, do roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander? Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried. Do you have the original, original of this?
I had sent it to, I can get you an original.
Okay.
I will, I'll send both the updated plat and the development agreement without the draft on there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next then, under planning and zoning, we had a public hearing for an RZ 06-22 for Brian and Alicia O'Toole, a request to rezoning from agriculture to agricultural residential parcel located on lot nine and lot 10, less partial A in section six, township 140 north, range 95 west with an address of 10730 30th K Street southwest, containing approximately 19.95 acres. This is a area that they wanted to subdivide because they wanted for a loan on it to build a home on there and they separated from their other property they own. I believe they have 75 acres area on it. Is there any other questions on that or? Not to make a motion to approve that rezoning for Mag to Ag Residential for the O'Tooles, RZ 0622.
I will second that.
Roll call vote, Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Next, we had a public hearing for RZ 07-22 for David R, R, I believe, and Larry Goldsmith are requesting rezoning for agriculture residential rural residential to a parcel legally described as lot one, block two of Antelope subdivision in section 17, township 139 north, range 91 west, containing approximately 10 acres. On that, they're, they wanted to divide a lot there that was into two, a five acre lots, there was a 10 acre. There was a neighbor to the north that was against this. They testified at the, at the public hearing because he thought he was getting one neighbor instead of two on there. But there was, I did previously in this subdivision, we did allow for a family member was actually, I think, some parents, another place that they subdivided there for a five acre lot so they could get financing for a home built on that lot too. That was further to the east in this subdivision. But the planning and zoning did recommend approval on this rezoning.
Ms. Ingelsted, is this the one that needed to go, if you looked over again just to make sure?
No.
Leave so no?
Okay.
And I make a motion to approve this rezoning for Mag Residential Rural Residential. It's RZ 07-22.
Checking.
Okay.
Quick question. Did someone say something about restrictive covenants out there and not allowing subdividing? Do you know anything about that?
There were, we didn't have anything on record and that was not filed with the county.
Thanks.
Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Next, we had a public hearing for RZ 08-22 for Mason Eberts is requesting a rezoning for Ag to Ag Residential on a parcel located in the northeast half of section 18, township 138 north, range 97 west with the address of 4418119 M Avenue southwest, containing approximately 14.57 acres. Public on here, there was nobody that testified against this and it's on a parcel that's 160 acres now. It's actually part of family members own that. He has a modular home there that he's going to be removing and building a home there from replacing the modular home that's there now. And I make a motion to approve that, RZ 08-22 for Mason Eberts for rezoning agriculture to agricultural residential.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander? Commissioner Marsh? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Next, we had a public hearing for a TUP 01-22 for Mayo Construction Company Incorporated requesting a temporary use permit for a hot mix asphalt operation in approximately four acre lease land area in a, on a 26.02 acre parcel located in the west one half of the southwest quarter of the south, one third of section 15, township 140, range 95. And that's so they have their hot mix plant be running there. I think, believe they said about 10 week period, I believe it was on there. And then they're, they have an agreement with Fisher Sand and Gravel, who actually owns that gravel pit area. I make a motion to reapprove that, TUP 0-01-22 for Mayo Construction.
I'll second.
Get a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Xander? Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
And the only other thing we had there, there was a preliminary plat presented for King Ranchette subdivision. And that was tabled at this time because there was some, not a final agreement with the owners in that property. That's all I had for planning and zoning then.
On the planning and zoning is, was, has there been some follow-through with that land south of town? With?
That's in the city. You're talking with the city?
With the ETZ?
Yeah, the city is dealing with that. They've, they've contacted the owner. They've, they're making some progress on that again there. But with the muddy conditions, I know he's working on it.
Okay. Okay, next on the agenda is the library expansion with Linda Carlson and Rita Ennen.
Good afternoon now.
Good afternoon.
Commissioners, we do have, I think, a video. I think we have a video that's going to run here, just a minute or so, if they can run it. If not, we can continue. I could start by stating that we, we've been here before. I've been here and both the director.
Been here?
Are you ready to go? Looks like it's ready to go.
Thought you've seen a couple of different presentations and heard me talk more than once. And we've got a video that we're going to be using with fundraising that we thought you might enjoy. I brought it home yesterday.
It's okay.
Technology at its finest.
Exactly. It works until it doesn't.
In the meantime, maybe while we're waiting, just to let you know, I'm going to brag a little bit. We are in the middle of our summer reading program. We did have more than 400 people at the kickoff event a week ago Saturday. So really exciting. We've got lots of kids reading, coming and doing STEAM activities and all of the usual things. You get a chance, come over and see us sometime this summer. You'll also see that we've needed to make some changes inside of the library that we hope are temporary. We've removed some seating to replace it with shelves. We're going to be putting up a couple temporary offices. We're trying to make the most we can of the space we already have while we're waiting for the expansion. Would you all have any questions for us? Linda is going to talk about what the financing of this is expected to look like.
While, while they're still working on that, because I'd like you to see that video. We came before you when the city proposed that they would do $3 million towards the library expansion. That was approved as of last year for this year's budget. When I came before you, then, then I asked if this county would be able to support the $3 million also. And through talks and all the things that we've been doing, we went back out and we went through some partnership and we went through a grant program. We're going through the USDA grant program because the city of Dickinson still qualifies under the 2010 census yet. They update quarterly for their census through the USDA, but they're always about a year and a half behind. So time is of the essence when it comes to this census thing and the loan. But we were granted, we are granted a $5 million. And what we're looking for is support from the counties. We're starting with Stark County. And what I'm asking for is if you would be able to support 300,000 for 10 years. That would help support pay on the loan. The loan is 5 million. It's going out for anywhere from 25 to 40 years. They haven't made that determination yet. It's at about 2.5%. And then with that, we would be using any funding that we have beforehand before the loan is used. And so that's why we're going out and looking at that. We thought maybe it would be a little bit more pleasing to the budget to be able to spread this out. I'm just proposing that when I did my amortizations for some of the other bills that we have with, with the library expansion. And we're looking at some partnership with other, what do you want to say, arts and.
Other, arts and science, cultural.
Cultural, people coming in to being able to, that's why we want to show the video if we could because there's spaces in there for arts and cultural and we want to partner with those that are in here. Badlands Arts Association.
The new, there's a new group that's looking for arts and science programming. It'd be very similar to our STEAM programming. Partnering with them, we could make sure that we'd have this building programmed every minute with things that would be.
So that new group is, are that, that new group is working with you? So it would be in the same?
We, we are in discussions.
In discussions, okay.
They were looking for a new building and things and they had come to the city. And I did some work with them on the financials and then we started talking about partnership and stuff. So that's why we thought, okay, with the expansion of the library, they have the space. They already have their STEM program for arts and science and things. And why not combine the two of them and the funding would be there for. And why not combine the two of them? And the funding would be there for both of them. They, they can't get a lot of the funding raised up and we're trying to get that.
Is that the same group that's looking at the old City Hall?
Yes. Yes. Mm-hmm. Yep. So that's why we decided that we'd go and look at some partnership. Do you want to go ahead and run it? We'll just run it.
As long as it's running.
Have the volume?
There is sound.
There is.
Sound is really just kind of some music. So you're getting most of it with the words. Okay, there we start again.
So, very short, sweet. But you can see that we're looking at open spaces and we want to bring in more programming. And like she said, um, for over four hundred just in the summer reading program, a program that's been going on for quite a few years now. And it's still growing. Everything is growing. We've seen enormous numbers in even adult reading programs and bringing their children in and having something for both and stuff. So this is what we're looking at. Uh, we're asking the commission to look in their budget if they can and to help support the library. Uh, Rita and I, our mission is to go to all the other counties and ask for support also. But we're looking for the support of that five million dollars to help that first expansion of phase one. And if we can get through phase one, as far as the building expansion and everything, then we'll look at going further, but one step at a time.
You said the city of Dickinson's giving you three million?
City of Dickinson, yes. Um, committed three million from last year's budget. They set aside three million for the expansion.
Are you going to have any parking issues after this is done?
I don't believe so, um, Commissioner Marsh. I believe that we have, um, something in plan for an extra parking lot, um, that the library does own and that we're looking at that expansion also for that.
They had done a parking study that, um, we could probably redo because American Bank Center has taken that one part of, of parking. But at the time, we were seeing within about a two block radius, so you could easily park a hundred cars. I know everyone wants to be right next to the front door, but.
I, I guess I would like to see how the partnership was going to work, you know, with the arts and, you know, get more information on that. I like the idea about the ten-year spread, but a lot of times with the commission rollover, it's kind of hard to do a ten-year when you have different commissioners every two years sometimes coming in.
But I know that with the other, with other commissioners and stuff that have, I've talked to personally, um, they just couldn't see that the amount, a big amount coming out. We just don't know what's going to happen and stuff.
Yeah.
And then I also wanted to state that the parking also is, we are redoing that parking lot where the city employees park, which is just a jump from the library. That is also going to be all redone for parking. Um, and that is.
That's not part of this budget, though?
No, that's a part of the city's budget. Yep, we're doing that. And to, that's why we took that, um, west side of that parking lot to help support with the library, too, um, for their activities and everything, because they're just right across the street on that.
When I look at, and help me out, because I know you probably know the number, what is the existing footprint of the, uh, building?
Twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine thousand. And you want to add fifty-four thousand?
No, that would be the total when it's all done, I believe.
Well, phase one addition, twenty-two six.
I was here.
Uh, that, that's why I'm confused. So, uh, twenty-two six is phase one, sixty-five hundred, phase two addition, twenty-five thousand. Oh, I see, phase three remodel. I didn't see that.
Yeah, yeah.
So all said and done, fifty-four nine fifty. And you want to add twenty-nine thousand.
As you know, that that lot to the, would that be the south?
To the south.
Is there now?
Right.
And that's where we're going with that phase one.
I guess, you know, reading is such an important part of any culture. And I mean, as long as we can support our smaller communities with it is a big, always a big thing because they pay taxes and you have to be able to have access or access has to come to them once, one or the other.
Right. And we're doing that, too. We are looking and expanding our, improving, I should say, and improving our book mobile. Because that is one, that has been, uh, something that has been brought to the library and that Rita's reported onto the city, is that is something that is very much needed. And the schools love it. They still would love it because they don't have to have all that library materials that come to their front door.
Very important part of your system is that book mobile.
Yeah, exactly. So we're working on that also.
Yep.
And stuff. So that's why.
And that's part of this budget, too?
Yeah.
No, that's not, no, no.
Just thought I'd ask.
Nope. Nope.
So we have some grant opportunities to add to. Um, it's a part of your budget every year, you know, some depreciation on that, as it is for all of the counties. And so we've got, um, about half what we need in hand. And we're looking at a couple of big grants that might just finish the job for us.
Yeah.
I think this is something we need to just, you know, look on with our budget to make sure we have the money, because we have some big bills coming in with our small cities with their infrastructure. I mean, I'm sure we can be able to do something. I don't know how much, but definitely can keep you on the list.
Yeah, I wanted to present that we're not looking at a big amount.
Mm-hmm.
We're looking at some support and whatever we can do for that loan to be able to support that loan. Uh, that loan, to me, I think is very important. If we can get under this on our two thousand and ten census, I was just ecstatic about that we can get under with that low interest right now and spread it out to almost forty years. I think that this is something that we really need to grab on to because they're going to update their numbers and then we no qualify no more.
When is the deadline for that loan?
We started it. We started the paperwork, but as far as the USDA goes, it's up to them when they decide to up their census.
Okay.
And they update every quarter. They go into what they need to. But she told me that on the run of it, it takes at least a year before they will do that. So that's why I'm pushing.
Okay.
So, yeah, we're hoping to get this through ahead of that.
Okay.
While we still qualify.
Appreciate. And thank you very much.
Yes.
For the video. So on that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Could you, are people working with you and add that much more to the facility and stuff?
Exactly. Yeah, they need help with their funding and stuff. And we're hoping that this will be a good partnership with them. Be a win-win.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanna?
Good afternoon. Joanna Percy, Human Resources Director. Uh, the first policy that I'd like to look over, we developed a travel meals and lodging policy. All we really had in the employee handbook was a chapter on mileage and a chapter on per diem. And I didn't feel that that was enough, um, direction for our staff. So I thought it would be good to create a policy, um, that clearly, you know, stated what we do and performing their duties and responsibilities that we would reimburse them for, uh, meals, lodging and miscellaneous travel expenses. Um, it basically goes through the, the different areas of transportation, um, reimbursement for meals and lodging. And then, you know, if, if we pay them incorrectly and then ask them to give us that money back, what the repercussions are there then, too. So, um, I thought this, um, would be good to have this. And then in addition, the travel expense voucher goes along with that. We have a current travel expense voucher. This is it. Um, we just updated it with, um, a little more information and also the instructions on how to fill out the voucher. And, um, we also added the signatures to it because, uh, accounts payable was, or payroll was getting this. And, um, you know, we were leaving it up to them to determine whether we gave them what they needed or things were appropriate.
I don't have that page with their stuff.
Looks pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah.
The travel expense voucher?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's okay.
If you want to pass one down, maybe they can.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I just have a question. Uh, I think this all looks fine. We currently have a policy on out-of-state travel where even if it's in your budget and the tax assessor needs to go to Minneapolis for a seminar, they request out-of-state travel approval. Um, I'm just wondering if we can potentially change that to a, just a notification process. To me, it seems redundant. We approve it in their budget, but then we have to re-approve them for, to do travel. And since you're in this arena, I wouldn't have brought it up, but, but since you're in the travel arena.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if that isn't something that should be, could be looked at.
Um, I did include that in the next policy, the training and development.
I was way in.
You were. Yes, yes. So, um, on job-related training, um, number four, when a trip not previously budgeted and approved requires travel outside of North Dakota, a request must be submitted to the board. But like you said, if they've already budgeted for this, they don't need to bring that to you. Um, the only reason that I understand that those were being brought to the board was, um, when somebody travels out of state, we have to notify our insurance and, and it's a possible workers' comp issue. And so, um, I put number eight here in the travel under transportation. Number eight, when vehicle transportation outside of North Dakota is required, notify the county risk manager slash human resources to ensure insurance coverage of all of our employees. So.
And I, I agree, notification is critical, but approval, it's like, uh, we only meet once a month and it's, sometimes it's a little redundant.
Yeah. And, and the man, um, the department heads and elected officials also asked, um, that we clarify that, too, that they don't have to bring every trip, even if it's budgeted, um, forward.
Thank you.
So, um, with that, um, in the handbook, I combined chapters seven and eight and just put them both all together, made it more general. Because if we do any updates to these, as you'll see, we follow IRS guidelines and the state sentry code. So if those are updated, then our travel expense voucher would be updated. We wouldn't wanting, be wanting to update our handbook every time that happened. So with that, I'm looking for an approval.
I move that we approve the amended policies on travel meals. Can I do them in one motion or do you want two separate motion? Travels, meals and lodging and training and development as presented by, uh?
I'm.
Planning on the two one, right?
No.
Oh, you want, oh.
No, I, I probably should go over some things in the training and development.
Oh, I thought.
That's new. Yeah.
Okay. My fault. I'm sorry.
Do you want me to do, present that first?
We approve the travel meals and lodging policy as amended by the HR Director.
Okay. I just think that whoever the, you know, the, just so the commissioners know on the meeting or, you know, there's an email that's put out or something on where travel is.
I agree. They should be notified.
Yep, there should be notification. Yep.
Yeah. Simple email or something.
Kate, there was a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. The next policy is training and development. And, um, the, the purpose of putting this policy into place, we didn't really have anything in the handbook. Um, and, and I think it's important for us to, you know, to encourage professional development and growth in all of our employees. Um, it is also a great opportunity to retain people that are looking to learn. And so, um, put some guidelines in there. Um, we do have mandatory training that we typically do every year, um, that's required. Um, we do anti-arrestment. We do the claims management and drug-free workplace. Um, cybersecurity, we added last year. Um, uh, this Title VI of the Civil Rights Act, um, we get federal monies for our roads departments. So we, um, include that in there. And, um, any other training required by individual departments. So, for instance, I know when you guys are first, um, you know, take office, you have some required training that you need to do. So, um, and then it gets into job-related training and it just goes over department heads may within their budgetary, budgetary constraints, plan, schedule and pay for job-related training for themselves and for regular full-time and regular part-time employees essential to the work assigned. Um, and then when employees want to request training, they would go to their department head and, and request this, too. And there's some criteria there as to, you know, whether it should be, um, approved or looked at. Um, and gets into the Fair Labor Standards Act, we have to pay for people when they go to training and, and, and travel also. So, um, yes.
So, if, and I haven't read this line by line, but is there, um, any restrictions on the education and the limit to it after, maybe that person gets a BA, now they want a master's and then a PhD? And are we just, are, is there a cap anyplace?
So I think maybe you're speaking more to the second part of this. Um, what I just spoke to was just job-related training certification that they need just to maintain their knowledge and, and, and things along that line. So we, we added this new section. Um, this came as a request from some of our departments. And, and this is more for tuition-type reimbursement when they're wanting to do something not on our time, you know? So this would be outside of work time. Um, they're taking a, a college class, um, at night or something along that line. Um, or they want to get a, a certification, like I'll take me, for example. I got my SHRM certification. Well, um, that's something that, you know, you have to study. You get study material for, and then you go to a testing facility and you do that, you know? So that would be an example of something that I did on my own time. Um, so what we were proposing, we, um, we basically looked at, um, the city of Dickinson's policy. We liked what they were doing. And so each year, they budget a certain amount for their employees. And, um, then they can apply for these. So let's say I want to, you know, get a, take a few credits at DSU. Um, I would, I would have to pay for it myself, you know, and, and get, get approved to, accepted, I guess you would say. Um, I can apply to get reimbursed from the county. And, but it is up to you. You would look through the applications each year. Um, we would do it in January is what I proposed here. And then, then you would award, you know, a, as award to somebody each year. Um, there's limits. You could do, the limit, somebody can get a semester is fifteen hundred dollars. Um, and a maximum a person could get a year is three thousand dollars. So that.
So we would be furthering their education with taxpayer money?
Um, you would, it would have to be for the good of the county. Okay? So if, if you needed somebody, you know, that needed a, a degree or a certification in something, you know, and that.
Discretion.
Exactly, exactly. You don't have to give any money if people apply.
I think I would like a first. I think I would like a first reading on this. I mean, these are, the first one was pretty self, I mean explanatory, but I think on some of these policies, it'd be nice to have a first reading to be able to go through it a little bit more than just to make such a quick decision.
It's kind of what we did at our, at our policy meetings. I mean, we would go through our department head policy, we kind of go through that and review it, this is what they recommend to bring forward.
When not all five commissioners get to go to those.
I understand that, but that's why it's provided to you ahead of time to read.
Is it going to be like a, I mean, sort of, some of those pass fail, is it going to be a grade point average?
You have to get a C, baby.
Grade of C?
You have to get a C.
Or, or it's equivalent, so some, some classes are just pass fail too, so, yeah, yeah.
Well, and I like seven and eight, uh, if you leave, leave the employment of the county within a certain time after getting the credit that that gets, uh, subject to reimbursement, I think those are good. Um, I think we should encourage professional development amongst staff, I think that's a no-brainer. Um, I think it's simple enough to move forward because ultimately we have final decisions on which applicants are, uh, tuition reimbursement credits as it's defined here, um, app, and so I'm, 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 uh, okay with that as it's proposed. Now, can it wait for another month? That's fine, but I, I don't.
As a chair, I'd like to move to table till next month.
And number four kind of addresses, the continuing education program must correspond to an accredited program that either offers growth in an area related to the employee's current position or that might lead to promotional opportunities. They may include courses for college credit, continuing education credit courses, seminars and certification exams. So those are some examples of things that people might, you know, be interested in or applying for.
It's a little insensitive.
Yeah, mhm.
I mean, I agree with you, Neil, and I agree this is a good thing, it just, with on the taxpayer dime, I just, I, I don't know.
Can, uh, can we re, uh, approve the, uh, transportation, uh, travel meal?
We did.
We just.
We did.
Huh?
We did.
Oh, we did?
That one's already approved.
Excuse me, I must've dozed off.
You need to get a second on that.
I made a motion to table. Without a second, that motion.
Aye. I would move that the, um, training and development policy and procedure as presented, um, be approved.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Masser?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Chair votes no.
Okay. And then one, one last thing I had, I needed, um, clarification in our handbook. I had came and presented the, um, whether we wanted to observe Juneteenth as a holiday and you all had said, no, you know, we will wait. Um, so what we do need to change in our handbook is it reads that, um, holidays, any other day appointed by the President of the United States, the Governor of North Dakota, or by motion of the Board of County Commissioners. So what we need to do is, is, um, strike the President of the United States out of there because he's said it's a holiday, so.
We've been trying to do that for a long time.
Okay, I'll move that the holiday section of chapter four, remove the, uh, ver, verbs or the words, the President of the United States.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll, Commissioner Masser?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. County CD renewal process.
So I just wanted to go through with the commission, I kind of provided you what I get when a CD is up for renewal, um, what that renewal notice looks like. And then I also wanted to show you how I send out that the county has a CD up for renewal and to please provide your best one and two-year rates and I send it out to local banks. Um, I try to send it to the ones that are as local as possible and not, um, you know, not, not the really big banks, but the ones that are in town keeping our money as local as possible. And so I wanted to give the commission this example just so that they could see, because this is the last one that I did, and, um, these were the, you know, what was provided to me back from the four banks that I sent out to. And I just wanted the commission to see that I chose, um, I highlighted on that first one because I put them in order by the rates that they send back to me. And that is what I decided to go with. And also when they say special with this one, in that time, if the rate does increase, I do have a one-time chance to take a higher percentage rate. And so that's why, one of the reasons why I chose to go with the three-month longer option is so that I had that chance if all of a sudden interest rates jump to four percent or something crazy. Um, so what I'm looking for from the commission is just for you guys to see this process and to give me permission just to continue on doing what I'm doing and renewing the CDs at, um, the best option available from the local banks.
I think it'd be the right choice. I think it'd be the right choice.
Thank you.
I have, you know, and Karen and I have visited about this, I just think there needs to be a sounding board for, uh, Karen when she renews one. I don't care, it can be the chairman, it can be another commissioner, but just so that there doesn't look like there's favoritism to one institution versus another. Now, that was my thing is Karen, shop for the rate, do the administration, make the recommendation, but have another commissioner sign off and say, yep, let's, let's go with that one. That was my only, that's kind of where this all was brought forward.
We've done that in the past where I sign off or the chair signs off, doesn't it? Okay.
I just, I've just have informed the commission of some of the options that I went with in the past and we do have two more up for renewal that I will have to check on. So it, I mean, I'm totally okay if, if the commission wants to sign off, I just wanted you guys to be aware of that I am shopping around for rates and, um, that's what is set forth in sentry code as far as shopping around for rates and trying to get the taxpayer the most for their money, so.
And I mean the 24-month, I always try to stick to a year or two years, but I mean, it's only three more months more if you're going to get that good of a rate.
I know, I couldn't resist the, um.
No, yeah.
The special thing.
Pledging assets, is that affected by any of this then?
So the pledge of assets we do, um, I have the banks keeping track and if I, let's say it was to, you know, like this one, I did move a CD from one bank to another, I have to sign off on those assets, the pledge of assets with the bank that I moved it from. And then the new bank has to increase our pledge of assets. So yes, it is still pledged.
Yeah, I, I think that's important to track that too, so, but, yeah, I think you're on line.
So for now, are, are you okay with me letting the chair know which interest rate is the best and before renewal? Because we do have two more coming up and they kind of come at weird times.
Sure. Okay, we'll move on to St. Elizabeth. AFC restricted event permit.
Okay, this is, um, a restricted event permit that I had that came in and it is for a poker run. Um, it has to be a restricted event permit, not a local permit because it is poker. And, um, even though they're collecting their cards at different places and not sitting there and playing poker, according to the state, it still qualifies as poker. We went round and round in a circle about that. So I did, um, issue them their per, uh, permit so they could have their permit number and it is for, um, the gaming proceeds, go to the women's shelter and rape crisis center. Um, and that is going to be held on June 11th, so very soon. And so I just would like the additional approval from the commission that basically it was okay to issue this permit and I'm try, and then we'll go over the policy that I'm going to try to put into place for some of these future ones.
Can I have a motion?
So moved to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Okay, and then the next two ones I had were, um, the application for special permits to sell alcoholic beverages, um, at both the Stark County Fairgrounds and, um, the, uh, Rough Rider Motorsports Park. The events were put down here. Um, the only thing that I will say is, and I spoke to, well, this one, this approval is for Bernie's Esquire for both the fairgrounds and the motorsports events that are listed here. Um, I did go over last year and we did send out notices that these businesses that are going to be doing beer sales, et cetera, at our, um, county stuff does have to have a county license number also. And, um, Bernie's Esquire did meet the requirements for that and the other businesses were notified that if they want to apply for that, they have to also have a county license. That's kind of a new thing that we did not know about in Stark County.
You have to have a state license to go with it.
Well, yeah, a state and a county. The county one was the surprise one. Um, so I did approve both of these because we had some events that started here last weekend and he did have both, um, the county and the state license and I'm just looking for the commissioner's approval and okay. And then, like I said, we'll discuss this process a little bit more here, but this was for the Esquire for the events listed for both the fairgrounds and the Rough Rider.
Um, Bernie, I'm going to ask that either restrain from voting on it since it's yours or you ask the commission for permission to, uh, vote on it, whichever way you want to go.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the fairgrounds, uh, and Rough Rider Motorsports special alcohol permits to Bernie's Esquire or whatever it was called.
Is there a second? Okay.
Was this, I guess I have a question with, this probably went to the, with the Rough Riders, but Eagles did it last, did they not want to do it this year or what was it?
Eagles is doing Rough Rider days.
It's, so it's just for those days listed. So if there's something above and beyond, then that's, I haven't heard anything from Eagles yet.
This doesn't maybe have any question on the application, but, so can you have, uh, two licensed permitted organizations to, to disperse the alcohol at the same location? Maybe Mr. Marsh would know that.
That was a question I had, but I had nobody to ask it to, so I didn't ask it, I have no idea. I mean, it's on separate dates, I mean, that's the same thing as if I rent, um, the BAC and I take my license there one week and somebody else rents it the next week.
Well, let, I'll just give you an example, if, if, uh, during Rough Rider days you've got beer concession, beer concession set up for the rodeo events and let's say, um, the spur bar wants to open up in a different part of the, during the same days, is, is it just restricted to one vendor?
I think maybe that'd be part of a bid process or something about the concession.
I wouldn't take it, you wouldn't want to, uh, there, your liability, there'd be some issues there.
Yeah, no, I understand, I'm just curious about it, thank you.
So, so ours currently are restricted to the dates listed and, um, separated out between the fairgrounds and Rough Rider Motorsports. And currently at the fair board only enlists one vendor for the events. So I think most of the ones listed are, are specific fair events, yes.
I, I think Bernie makes a perfect point being, you know, uh, two separate vendors would, would really cause a issue of liability.
Yeah.
We were working on an, uh, event with The Rock downtown and we were both going to take our licenses and go midway, and he says, no, it would be one license for both because there's no way for you to control what's going back and forth, so, yeah, it has to be all under, for that, for that event, you would think that it would cover that, that, um, venue's area.
So you guys just share that then or what?
For what?
Like that first on first?
No, that's, that's a totally different, that's a totally different event, but no, we don't share that area, the area is controlled by one license.
I see, okay, thanks.
Okay, there's a roll call, or there was a motion and a second, I'll do roll call. Commissioner Masser?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh? I mean, Commissioner Franchek, sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh, ship steam? Chair votes aye, motion carried.
Okay, the last thing that I just wanted to go over was our county special event and alcohol permits forms and processes. Um, if you looked at that special permit to sell alcoholic beverages at a special event, at some point in time, um, the office or it having a spot for me or somebody to sign off on it, um, was taken off this form. And so currently, if somebody wanted to, they could fill it out and send it into the state and there's no verification that it was approved through our, um, through my office or the commission because the signature line was removed for the auditor. So I would just like permission to put that line back on our, um, alcoholic beverages at special event form and update the form to include an approval line. And I just wanted the commission to approve that.
Good idea to do approval line for you, for you and the chair. Do we need a motion on that?
I think we probably should since it is me updating an actual form for the county.
Can I get a motion on the updating of the form for the actual, um, application for special permit to sell alcohol?
So moved.
Can I, there was a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, the last thing I had was, still had to do with the permits and the special event permits and forms I discussed with Amanda and we are sticking with the state policy as far as these events and permits and such should be going through the Board of Commissioners. And so I was typing up a notice to the public and I wanted to put it on our website to say that we do file, we have been following, we need to follow state guidelines and that these should be going through the commission and you need to get your paperwork in insufficient time for these events in order for it to go to a commission meeting. And I just wanted the, um, board's approval in listing a notice on our website of that if you are okay with it.
I'm okay with it.
Yep.
So somebody wouldn't be able to potentially come in?
On Thursday and expect to do something on Friday.
Yes.
What's the timeline you want to put on that?
Um, I would say that they need to have our, they need to have their information into us because I would like probably, um, Wednesday or Thursday before I get the packets out for the meeting and then you guys would approve those permits and such at the actual commission meeting and not me being a signing and signing off and then bringing them afterwards.
Okay.
So that's what I'm, I just would like to put a notice out there because I mean, that is what our policy is now, but it's never been enforced and.
Do we need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion for that.
No, I don't think so.
Are you, as long as the commission's okay with me putting a notice on our website, I would just, okay, and that's all I had.
Um, open records policy. There was some, um, discussion on the open records from December of 2020 on how we were going to distribute open records, do open records through department heads. open records, do open records through department heads, and I think Amanda was going to add some insight on this.
Yeah, way back in December of 2020, I think what originally happened is the commission had decided that we needed to probably get up a policy in place so that these open records could be tracked, and so things weren't falling through the cracks. And until that time, then I was gonna take it over. But I, I don't think it's a bad idea, I guess, to have the department heads trained. I spoke with Alicia Adolf, I think her name is, over at the Association of Counties. They can do, they have a webinar, and they can give me access to it, or I can send her the names and emails of all the individuals that you guys want to be trained to do these open records, because the county, the state likes to keep track of that as well, to, to make sure people have the training. And, you know, once that happens, I guess the other, maybe I can work with Joetta a bit, and I think the sheriff's office has a, a pretty good policy that they already follow as far as their open records, so I don't necessarily think they need to be involved in this, but I think Joetta and I could work together on a policy. I think, I think it's important to make sure that the open records requests that are coming in are getting tracked, so whether it's a, an email, a dedicated email where all of the open records come through, so they can be tracked, and then, you know, HR, whoever can see who, who the department is, that the records are being requested, you know, shoot them off, however that looks. But, yeah, I know it had been discussed, and I think it continues to kind of come up, so, you know, the training is out there from the Association of Counties. We can definitely work on, on getting some department heads or all of the department heads trained and, and go from there, so.
And that have a special, have a special email or a website, like you said, so all of it will be sent to one?
My suggestion right now would be to just have the board, maybe direct myself and Joetta to work on a, like an open records policy, and bring it, bring it next month or in August, and we'll, we'll work, that'll allow me to work with Alicia, like I said, to kind of get some of that, figure out what we can do as far as the webinar for the training for the open records. We can ascertain the department heads that need to be trained, you know, some of those things, just kind of get the logistics worked through it.
Okay. So do we need a motion?
I don't, I don't know if you necessarily need a motion, but if you want us to, you could just direct Joetta and I to work on it and present it, you know, like I said, in, in July. If you want to have a motion, you certainly can.
Okay.
I'm fine with the directive unless you want a motion.
Nope, so then we just have one left on the transferring of the money for the hill levying of the 1.3 million dollars over to the park board improvements. I know a lot of the, a lot of the contractors have been waiting for this, that put their free time in. I'm not gonna list all their names because I don't want to forget one, but there was a lot of contractors that, that knew that if they would do it, I mean, they just got their gas paid for, but all their labor and everything was free.
Warrant your own equipment, everything.
Yep, yep. And they were under the understanding that this money would then get, instead of being charged the county, it would get put in the park board improvement fund. So I'm looking for a motion to transfer that money into that fund.
I'll make that motion.
So would the, would the commission like that to come out of the, from the general fund to the fairgrounds, the, the project account that was set up for Lisa? Is that what?
That's what I would think.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I have questions, so I'll wait till you get a second.
Well, the chair can second.
Sure.
I will second.
Okay. So earlier, we discussed when this agreement was made at the park board, and it was twenty, help me out here, in 2020?
I thought it was 2020.
Or 2019. I guess, I would just like more verification that that was done. I'm, I'm okay with doing the match, if that's the, but there is no motion to that effect. And so before I just sign off on 1.3 million, I would want to make sure that the consensus and everything was, that's where everybody was at that point. And so I'd like to visit with, personally, I would visit with a couple of the contractors and a couple of former commissioners so that everybody's just, that's the deal, and let's set it there, that, that there's a deal, and then there's another hook to it that we don't know about.
Yeah, follow up to what you're saying. There should be a paper trail of where the funds from one to the other and.
Well, no funds were transferred, right? No funds were transferred yet.
Where'd the funds come from to start with?
They donated their time and machinery.
Right, so.
I mean, there are no funds, there isn't a paper trail because it was donated time.
Right, so I guess I'm losing.
And, I mean, there was Schwartz, there was Holibichik, there was Bronco, there was, you know, Denny's Electric did some, they, extreme, none of those people would have done it. I know I'm probably missing a few, but none of those people would have volunteered to level that hill without that understanding that where that money was gonna go. Yep.
So, so can I maybe look back in 2020 and look up where the discussion was had that the commission? I'll be able to find it. If I, if I have a year buffer, it's fine.
Whatever it was, whatever it was, I just, like I said, I'm not gonna sign off on 1.3 without.
Was it the park board or was it the commission that?
It was the commission. It was when Pete was, Pete was chair, I believe.
I'll look for those discussion minutes, and I can send them out to the commission and.
It's fine with me.
Okay.
I think you guys still have to approve a bid, right?
Yes. Before you run away, Neil.
Hold that motion adjourned, yeah.
Okay, so then we will table the hill levy until the next. We have a motion and a second on the hill levy.
We'll just table it, table it.
You can withdraw.
I guess I withdraw my motion.
From the general to the park board.
You can, you still can, we haven't voted, so you can withdraw on it.
I withdraw my motion until we get more information.
Okay, a second.
Okay, when we did the bid tabulation, there was an error in Martin Construction's bid. It didn't make any difference. Their bid was 1,888,438.27, but the other two bids were correctly added up, so I would recommend award to Holiba Construction for 1,376,225.73.
I'll second. I'll move to approve that.
I'll second.
All in favor, this, Commissioner Zander?
Pardon me?
It's money, so I'm asking for roll call, Commissioner Zander.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear the second. I'm not, I must.
That's okay. That's okay.
Didn't sleep well last night. Aye.
Commissioner Mess, Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchek?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carried.
And then one more thing before you guys adjourn. The one that you didn't open, I think, needs to be returned back to.
They, they come and picked it up.
Okay.
They said it wouldn't have been low anyway.
Okay.
But one other thing, Neil, you asked about House Bill 1505 funds. Them two projects we bid were 2,499,949. We got two and a half, so we got 51 bucks to spare.
21, Tom. Is there anything from the public?
I move to adjourn.
Okay.